What's wrong? Are you okay? You need a Prozac? Valium?
I offered you mine and you didn't want mine? Oh, it's not mine.
I don't even like it.
I don't even like it.
That's how much...
Don't.
She only gives you the stuff she doesn't like.
Don't even like it.
No, in other words, I wouldn't have missed it.
Praying somebody would take it so I don't have to.
You've known that by now.
I know.
Katie?
One minute.
I can go up and get to a nurse.
Nicole, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you. I'm gonna mute you and mute everything on this end.
Nicole, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me, Katie?
Now my heart's like upside down.
Is God speaking to us?
Oh, stop bitching.
Already? Already? Oh, my goodness. Keep it up. All right, let's see, where are we?
Did try again.
No, I don't even need. Why do I have it? I don't want it.
We may just have to leave everything.
Oh. This?
Hello, this is Katie.
Hi, Katie. It's Nicole. Can you hear me?
Nicole, can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Okay, so this is a great request here.
Get up for it. Chat, chat, one, two, three, chat. Tell me why is this talking thing going on?
Either we do this or we don't. There's no in-between.
It depends upon the size of the room and what you're gathered.
The whole thing's ridiculous.
We still have the six-foot distance between us.
Gonna try this again.
Four. Sorry?
Can you hear us?
I hear four different people. What'd you say?
All right, Katie, I'm gonna mute you until we're ready for the pattern book, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we'll leave all that. Sounds like she's got you all trained really well, actually.
I lost privileges. It is unmuted. Unmute everything. No, I can't because of the phone.
So this at me.
No, I kept trying to do it and I kept being told I can't.
Mine's not working either.
Good morning, everybody. It is 9:03 on Wednesday, March 25th, and I do call this commission special meeting to order those President or Commissioner Hanks, Vice Mayor Luke, myself, Mayor McDowell, Commissioner Karason, Commissioner Emrich, City Manager Lear, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Taylor. We have our officer and some staff in the place. Yes, we are practicing social distancing. At this time, I would like to ask if Commissioner Emrich would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Emrich. All right. So at this time, I need to get an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Motion on the floor to approve the agenda, and that was seconded, that was by Vice Mayor and seconded by Commissioner Karason. Go ahead and take the vote, please.
I still don't have buttons, just so you know. I got nothing.
Are y'all guesses?
Yeah.
Yes. I'll try and refresh again.
Oh, 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 oh. Okay, I got it now. You gotta go out and then...
I'll go out.
Yeah.
Okay, and City Clerk assures me that all five said yes to approve the agenda as presented. So we will move on now to public comment. City Manager, do we have any general public comment for this part? Or City, or Vice Mayor, do we?
I'm checking right now.
No, ma'am, I don't have any.
I do not have any in my file.
I have one public comment, which is for the first item.
Fantastic.
But no general.
All right. All right, so there's no public comment. We will move on to ordinance number 2019-46. Could I please, that's to approve the ordinance to approve the West Villages pattern book. City, I need a motion to read by Title 1.
So move, second.
Motion on the floor by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Karason. Go ahead and take the vote, please. And that passed five to zero. City Clerk?
Ordinance number 2019-46, an ordinance of the City of Northport, Florida, adopting the West Villages Village District Pattern Book for approximately 8,000 acres in the village, future land use, providing for findings, providing for adoption, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. I'll turn it right over to City Manager, so we can get started, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In March of 2019, the West Villages Improvement District submitted a pattern book amendment application. We brought this all to you to this, you, excuse me, try this again. We brought this to you guys back in early December. There were some questions, and it was decided that this and the post-annexation agreement by the commission decided to tie the two together and bring them back as a special meeting solely for the West Villages. So that is why we are here today in a special meeting, and everything on it is related to the West Villages. It has those two items that were tied together and one additional item, which you'll have on today's meeting as well. That being said, we have the pattern book for you. I have staff here as well as others to comment on this if you have any questions, but since I feel we'll probably have a lengthy conversation, I'm not gonna talk too long, so I'll turn it back over to you all.
Sounds good. I do not see anybody from the West Villages in the audience.
Yes, yes.
There they are, okay. Because I also heard somebody was on the phone, so I didn't know if we needed to...
There's a consultant on the phone, and there are members from West Villages in the audience as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure whoever was on the phone, when they come on, they state their name for the record and stuff.
The consultant on the phone has a presentation.
Okay.
So...
Well, this ought to be fine.
Katie, are you still there?
I am here. Good morning, Mister. For the record, Katie LeBarre with SPNTAC, representing the West Villages Improvement District.
All right, Katie, I've got your presentation up on the screen. I think it should be coming up in just a second on Commissioner's screens.
Depends on whether Commissioner Hanks has it or not.
All right, it's up there, so I'll try to scroll through for you and turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. And if you'd like to start with Slide 3, we just made the introduction. Again, Katie LeBarre with SPNTAC, representing the West Villages Improvement District. Next slide, please. As you all know, the West Villages is generally located on the north side of US 41, southwest of River Road, and it's comprised of 12 villages across approximately 8,000 acres. Next slide, please. The Comprehensive Plan and Unified Land Development Code establish the process for the Village District Pattern Plan and Pattern Book and Pattern Plan. The VDPB and the Village Index Map serve as the guiding policy document similar to the Comprehensive Plan for the city. It establishes a policy framework and guiding principles for each subsequent VDPP. The VDPP is the implementing document, which is similar to the ULDC for the city. It's the document that provides more specific guidance for development within each village, and it's intended to be responsive to the unique characteristics of each village while maintaining the overall character of the community throughout the West Villages. Next slide, please. Just to give you a little bit of an overview of the status of development in West Villages, Grand Paradiso, as you know, is being developed by Lennar. The Preserve is being developed by D.R. Horton. Renaissance and Oasis are under development through Madamie Homes. Island Walk is the Polpe de Vasta community, and then we have Sembler developing the Town Center. And we certainly can't forget the Atlanta Braids Spring Training Facility at the heart of the West Villages. Development is very active and is very, very successful over these last several years at West Villages. This proposed pattern book is intended to serve as a guide to the end users to help them to understand the overarching goals of both the developer and the City of Northport in the development of West Villages. Next slide, please. To give a little bit of context, over the last several years, we've processed several different Village District Pattern Plans. And in doing so, there's been ongoing conversation with staff that the pattern book should also be updated. We've identified the details contained in the pattern book go beyond the requirements of the Unified Land Development Code. There's specificity on design elements that is out of sync with current market realities. And the level of detail in the pattern book is more appropriately addressed through a design review committee, which is traditionally managed by a master developer. And so, to try to improve predictability for both the staff and the developer, we agreed that a rewrite was necessary, and staff agreed that the level of detail in the existing pattern book, like I said, goes beyond the requirements of the code and should really serve more as a guiding document establishing that policy framework for the West Villages. Next slide, please. And so, throughout the process, the goal was, has been to make the document more intuitive and more user-friendly. We want to tell the story of the West Villages and help the reader to understand all of the good work that comes forth from the vision, from commission, the history of development from village to village, and the rationale behind the process that we follow. Section 4, the regulatory framework, is important because in that section, we acknowledge the approval of the pattern plans that came, have come before, and we recognize that that development is intended to continue in accordance with their approvals. With this update, we recognize the establishment of the West Villages Review Committee, which was authorized in 2017, and functions as a design review committee with representatives of the master developer and West Villages Improvement District. The WBRC is authorized to review plans to ensure compliance with the requirements of the pattern book, Pattern Plan, and the ULDC. This review process is separate from city review and does not change the city review process. Next slide, please. As we were preparing for today's hearing, we learned that there was an opportunity to further clarify the intent of the regulatory framework, specifically as it relates to previous approvals and future approvals. And so, what you have before you is some amendatory language for consideration that hopefully clarifies that the villages that have been approved will follow those previous approvals as they develop. Future BDPPs will follow this pattern book, and the BDPPs for Villages ES and G were drafted to be consistent with this pattern book. Where deviations from the ULDC or pattern book might be requested, they will be specified in those BDPPs, and they must be approved by the City Commission. Next slide, please. The roadway and pathway types that are detailed in this pattern book are a complete compilation of the different roadway types that have been used in recent approved BDPPs. With this document, we are creating a palette of options for roadway sites. The roadways and pathways plan in the VDPP will identify the types of roads that are used within each village based on the anticipated form of development for each village. Next slide, please. Again, this document is intended to be more intuitive and user-friendly. To that end, we've organized the development standards and added village and town center standards. These are consistent with the recently approved BDPPs. So, for example, in Town Center, we obtained approval for 20% tree canopy covers to encourage a more urban landscape. That standard has been carried forward to this document. For Village Centers, the land use mix criteria are consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and ULDC. For Town Centers, we bring forward the land use mix that was approved in the VDPPs for Villages CNE. The intent, again, is to encourage a synergistic of use, land uses within Town Centers based on market trends. And finally, the pattern book devotes a new section to general development standards for non-residential use. Next slide, please. The design standards in the pattern book include standards for signage, landscaping, and lighting. The goal of these design standards is to ensure a high-quality, well-executed, master-planned community. To that end, we continue to refine the standards as development in West Villages is underway, and we continue to identify opportunities for improvement, particularly as it relates to the landscape standards. While there's a fair amount of detail in the signage and landscape requirements, we believe that each is necessary in order to promote consistency from village to village, and for that reason, we've included those standards in this pattern book. Next slide, please. As with Section 4, as we prepared for today's hearing, we heard from staff and decided that it might make sense to offer some proposed amendatory language for you to consider. You'll see on the screen, proposed language that modifies the definition for neighborhood centers. This language will allow for commercial uses, if deemed appropriate, in neighborhood centers. Commercial may not be viable for every neighborhood center, but ensuring that it's an option is reasonable, given that it could serve as a civic node in a community. Next slide, please. Other proposed revisions that we anticipate bringing forward, you know, making changes prior to the second reading include the removal of the index map from the pattern book. This is a separate approval document, and we're finding that it's a very dynamic document, one that's being revised fairly regularly. And as development continues in the West Villages, we expect the index map to be amended more frequently than the pattern book. And so, we believe that having each stand alone will minimize confusion for future readers and users of these approval documents. Page 58, we have language regarding the changeable copy and electronic signage. The current draft does include language that addresses the sign at Tamiami Trail and West Villages Parkway. We propose a mandatory language that states that for all other monument signs, the electronic copy portion is to be up to 60% of the permitted sign area or as permitted by the ULDC, whichever is greater. This will ensure that we have flexibility should the ULDC be revised in the future. Also on page 58, we propose to remove references to chain link fencing. We've determined that allowing this fencing is not in keeping with the desired aesthetic of West Villages, particularly around the perimeter. On page 67, in landscape requirements for major roads and parkways, we seek to clarify that the frontage yard or the buffer can contain no more than 50% sod. Required trees and shrubs must be present and must occupy at least 50% of the buffer area. Again, it's about how it's being applied in trying to make those adjustments so that we ultimately achieve that aesthetic that we're seeking. On page 72, I'm sorry, next slide. On page 72, we propose to clarify that the use of palm trees does not exceed 25% of the canopy tree requirement. We also propose revisions to parking lot landscape requirements to reduce the number of continuous parking spaces and to widen the landscape island to promote the long-term viability of planting materials, particularly canopy trees. So we're trying to minimize that heat island effect and ensure that the canopy trees that are planted will be viable for years to come. Next slide, please. Other landscape revisions that we propose include clarifying that if parking area, the parking area between the wheel stop and the curb is not paved, that it must be planted with ground cover and irrigated. We also propose to add or require that the four-foot wide paved strip be provided from parallel parking spaces to sidewalks. That will ensure that pedestrians who are exiting a car and trying to get to a sidewalk can get there safely and efficiently. I call it the high heel strip. If you're in high heels, you're not going to sink into the sod as you're walking towards the sidewalk. And finally, we propose to increase the minimum foundation landscape area width from two feet to four feet, again, to improve that aesthetic and to promote the viability of the landscape material. Next slide, please. So as I worked to wrap this up, I wanted to just touch on two modifications that were noted in the staff report. We propose a landscape easement for street trees along residential streets located within the residential lot. Staff expressed concern with the removal of street trees from residential lots without city review and noted that the removal of those trees significantly impacts the visual appeal of the community. And so, we worked with staff to address their concern, and the solution that's in the pattern book is supported by staff. And finally, the tree canopy coverage, the ULDC currently prohibits counting street trees towards the required 35% canopy coverage requirement, and we propose to count all trees towards the 35% requirement. In doing so, we're simplifying the accounting process for both staff and the developer, and the street trees provide the canopy coverage, and we now provide an added layer of protection with the landscape easement. And so, we believe it only makes sense to count all trees as they're planted towards that tree canopy coverage requirement. So, in closing, we have worked very closely with staff throughout the development of the pattern book for the last year. We have a favorable recommendation from staff and a unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Funding Advisory Board. The document that you have before you is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the ULDC. This is considered the first reading, and so we request a recommendation from City Commission today. Continue this request to a future commission hearing for second reading. I appreciate your accommodations today, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katie, for your presentation. We will, I will definitely need to look back at the proposed recommended changes at this late hour and not knowing about it. I need to be able to look at it more clearly. Excuse me. So at this time, we'll go ahead and take questions. Commissioner Karason, go ahead, please.
So my first question is that these proposed, I don't see the PowerPoint in my backup.
I don't either.
So, are these proposed changes reflected in that new pattern book that was given to us in March 12th?
No, these are new proposed changes.
Okay, well, I don't know how we can go any further until we get that list of proposed changes to determine how that reflects on what we have here today, because I was not prepared for other proposed changes at the last minute. I don't, I don't know how that matches up to the things that I had a question on or a problem with, you know what I mean?
We can get, Commissioner, we can get that printed. Like you say, we didn't have those as backup either, so now that we have them, we can print them out for you if you'd like to take a minute, but...
I don't know. Keep going.
That's up to you all. It's up to the commission how you want to handle that. Suggestions are being made right now by the applicant. If you would like to address them or not, that is up to you all.
Mayor, could I suggest that maybe we get that print and take about a 15-minute break so we can review them?
That's what I was thinking, too.
Okay, because I mean, it's not fair to not continue, but it's also not fair that we don't have the opportunity to review those side by side with what our questions and concerns are.
I agree. We'll print them out if you want to take a quick break.
Yeah, all, it's, there was a few things, not just the pages 57, 6, I'm sorry, 58, 67, 72, 73, but there were other things towards the end that she was saying that she wanted to change, but didn't go into detail on those.
Are you talking about the modifications?
Yes, ma'am.
Those are, those are reflected in the pattern book. Those are modifications that were substantive from our previous conversation.
I didn't know if it was something additional. Could you print that page also?
I'm sending it to my staff right now to print the whole thing.
Okay, fantastic.
Excellent.
So at this time, it is now 9:25.
Can we pose other questions while they're printing?
Well, we were gonna take a break.
Yeah, so that we could look at it later, but if we've got...
Let's see, if you have some other questions to pose in the meantime while that's printing, that way during your 15-minute break, because you wanted to review it during that, so give us some time to print it.
Because I have questions that don't have anything to do with what they're printing out.
So...
On one of the slides, am I being recognized?
Hang on one second. Did you have questions that were not related to the changes, or do you want to start over once we get those?
No, because it may, some of those changes may reflect what I had concerns with, so I'm just trying to minimize, you know.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to Vice Mayor Luke, and then, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Just a math kind of question. First page of Chapter 10, the Village Center Standards. And I didn't find it the same within the Town Center, but just real quick, when it flashed up, the minimum land area required totals 100%. So how can you have any variation between a minimum and a maximum if your minimum already totals 100%? I have this thing with numbers, so when it flashed in front of me, I'm sorry, I quickly did the math. But it doesn't, and it does not do that. It's only 80% on the Town Center, so you have the flexibility to go toward the maximum size.
So, the number four doesn't count in that? Because it's the combination of two and three. So you're double counting that one.
Okay, so you do only have a 70%, so number three is reflective. Thank you very much. That clarifies that. And then, as Katie was speaking, and thank you again, Katie. And then as Katie was speaking, and thank you again, Katie, she talked about what was existing currently would continue with the old standard or the old pattern book, but everything from this point on to the new, which, you know, is kind of understandable. But are we going to be carrying two pattern books for them all the way through the future to uphold the old pattern book?
So villages A through D were approved under the original pattern book. Their pattern plans are consistent with that original pattern book. Their pattern plans would guide development within those villages. So we're not making them go back and comply with anything that's new in this document, if that makes sense. So, and most of those are already built out, except for village D. A through C are almost completely built out.
That makes total sense, but say twenty years from now, they're going to change something within those villages. Which pattern book are they then going to have to adhere to originally?
That's a good point. I think we maybe want to have a discussion about amendments to the pattern plans in the future, having to comply with the new pattern, pattern book.
Because otherwise, you're carrying two different pattern books for the district.
Yeah, no, that's not the intent.
Okay, that is the questions that I had outside of those, and thank you.
Great point.
Is, you don't want to be fumbling around with two of them. I see grandfathering them in as they are currently, but if you're going to change stuff in twenty-five years, what do you follow?
Yeah, I think we can add a sentence basically just saying any future amendments to VDPPs would have to comply with VDP requirements.
Where, where would that be added?
Probably, I think it's in the paragraph where it talks about all of those.
Is that regulatory framework?
I think so.
Thirteen?
That's what I would guess.
Yes, on thirteen.
I had a question mark at the end, sorry.
That was all I had.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
If somebody else had one.
To follow up with what Vice Mayor was saying, the language that will state that A through D will follow the old pattern book, how is that configured in this language?
That is, it's in that same paragraph there and that is one of those sections with recommended changes that's clarified just for...
Thank you.
Yeah, I really need that printed out.
Can you print that one part, too?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm printing the whole PowerPoint.
Oh, thank you. All right, so if you look at the box and it says plans specifically portions of villages A through D as shown in exhibit three point one. If you remove, like it was suggested, the index map, how are we going to know the specific portions of A through D because exhibit three point one is the index? I think we would just need to, go ahead, Katie.
I was just going to say, the index map is a separate approved document. You have to read the pattern book and the index map together. And so in identifying where villages A through D are located, you would go to that separate index map and view those villages accordingly.
So...
So we would change that language. Instead of saying as shown on exhibit three point one, it would say as shown on the West Villages index map.
Okay, so Ms. Katie just said that the pattern book and the pattern plan and the index map kind of all go together. Why not just include the most approved index map, which was July of two thousand and nineteen, with a caveat on there that says, "as amended from time to time"?
So it's certainly something, that's definitely an option and, you know, the board can decide they want to do that. Our recommendation is to remove it because it changes so frequently that we don't want people looking at the wrong document. If they're pulling up the pattern book and they're looking at the index map that's in there, they may be referring to something that's incorrect. And we see that the current pattern book that exists has the index map from like two thousand and seven in it. So somebody could look at that document all on its own and go, this is what's in effect, and it's not. So just to kind of minimize confusion when doing reviews of the West Villages.
All right.
Nicole, how would that need to be worded then in the proposed language to reword it so that it's not saying exhibit three one? It needs to state what?
We'd have to ask that all references to the index map be removed from the pattern book, correct?
I think you would just need to say as shown on the West Villages index map instead of referring to an exhibit number. And if it's referred to, exhibit three point one is referred to anywhere else, then yes, we would have to change it to the West Villages index map.
Get a consensus on that, please.
Wait, West Villages, as shown on the West Villages index map.
As amended from time to time?
Well, I'm thinking like at this time or current West Village index map. I'm trying to get a real verbiage here.
Most recently approved.
Current's fine.
Yeah, I think either one would work.
Okay. I'm trying to get a consensus so that way then we don't squirrel and forget things. That's all. So let's get a consensus to have all references to the West Villages index map in this pattern book be as shown on the West Villages index map and remove the index map entirely from the pattern plan. Commissioner Hanks?
The most current index map.
Current West Village index map.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanks? Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Karason? And Commissioner Hanks?
Hanks is down there.
I'm sorry.
I'll be a yes.
Coffee hasn't kicked in. Give me a break. Thank you very much. All right, so we have a consensus on that. Thank you.
Did you want to get a consensus on the item Commissioner Luke brought up about the future VDPP amendments?
Yes.
Where...
That was page fifteen to add that any further amendments fall under the new pattern book?
Page thirteen.
Okay.
Page thirteen? I'm sorry. Say it again, what's the language and where are we changing it?
Page thirteen. It would be up to staff exactly where to put it within that regulatory framework, but to add that any further amendments fall under the new pattern book.
I'm a yes.
To villages A through D?
Future VDPP amendments would fall under the pattern book in effect at the time.
Just want to make sure. All right, and Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Commissioner Karason?
Yes.
And Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so thank you for bringing me back to that one that we completely forgot about. All right.
I guess while we're, sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
While we're waiting, I do have one overall, general concession that I'd like to see because it's really going to kind of flow through all my other issues within this. They're not really issues, they're just things that I'm pointing out. Is that I think that we used to be on the West Village Design, what are they called?
The West Villages Review Committee?
Yeah, and that's referenced somewhere in there.
Page fourteen, page, I have the same, probably the same question. Page...
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
The West Villages Review Committee.
I have all these tabs, but I don't want to go through them until I get that side-by-side version, so. But yeah, the future, page fourteen, we talk about the, there it is, the West Village Review Committee, WVRC. And I absolutely believe that city staff needs to be a member of that WVRC. That's how it was originally set up for a reason. And if, I need to know if we can get that added by the applicant because that's, that's one of my key areas of concern in this whole process, that we have a city rep on that WVRC.
Well, the plan right now was to have a non-voting city person on there because do we want, the question is, do we want city to have responsibility for a neighborhood or a, one area's architectural review and as well as like their landscaping and everything else? Which we don't in most of the city.
Let me, let me tell you where I'm going with this and the reason why I'm... US forty-one corridor railroad was always supposed to have a design standard that flowed with the rest of the city of Northport. It was never supposed to be a separate design standard, ever. It was all supposed to be city center green. You were supposed to have the blue signs. The monument signs are different. We have different approvals in the past for those. So with that said, we always had a representative, be it voting or non-voting, that was supposed to be part of that WVRC. Now, if it's a non-voting and just a referral person that's assigned to it, that's fine, but I do want it referenced in here. Does that, because I think it's imperative that we have a city staff member as part of this review committee, not so much for the internal designs, don't get me wrong. It's more about how it coordinates with the ULDC at the time because remember, it's always flowing and always changing, but more in the case of how does it flow with the rest of our community in the design standards? So that's, that's one of my really key desires for this is to make sure that the city has a seat, not for decision-making if that's what the, you know, the city manager deems is unnecessary and concerning, but we need someone there to say, look, you can't do that. We had, we had a conversation about this six years ago, you know? Because people are always changing.
For non-voting, I would be fine with that.
Okay, so is it okay if we, and I guess it's up to the applicant. I mean, we got to, we got to get some information from the applicant that says we don't have a problem with that, we do have a problem with that, we need better wording. Can we get some answers on that?
I'm sure that they can come up here in the meantime, on their way up. I will tell you, the applicant and I did discuss this position because it has gone back and forth over time of whether or not we would have a position on there. And my position of it was that I don't want, did not want city staff having a voting specifically, and I think that's how...
Yeah, this is John Zetsky, Senior Vice President with West Villages LLP. Putting a non-voting member on to work about consistency...
Right.
Is fine with us. Just with the caveat, this is going to be an operational committee. We're, you know, we've made a lot of changes in the last eight months, as you all know. We're moving very quickly, so the committee's literally meeting as soon as submittals are made from the outside. It should not affect any of the overreaching design guideline or design elements like the landscape along town center. That's something we're controlling and we are going to come in for approval. So I don't see a problem with that, you know? The city manager can decide whom he wants appointed, being a building department, planning, you know, non-voting, as long as we understand that there's going to be additional demands on staff and we move fairly quickly. As long as that's understood, you know? Because again, it's in our best interest to get, at the chase will be the next building that'll go up in marketplace.
No, no, and trust me, I'm not trying to put any undue burden. I just want there to be a free flow of conversation and information between the city and the villages so that we can make sure that things don't get kind of lost in the shuffle and, you know what I mean?
That's absolutely not a problem. Actually, I believe we've actually opened up the free flow of information significantly in the last eight months. And anything that's going to work with that. For us to be successful over the next twenty years, for the city to be successful, we got to be working day to day. And Jason Hearsden said every day, we got to block and tackle every day to do our job. So I don't care.
So how would that be worded is what I'm trying to get at? And maybe the city attorney would have to kind of...
Of course, I walk up without a document.
I was going to say, I think if you added one individual appointed by the city of Northport as a non-voting member...
There you go.
Yeah, just add to the end of that size. Katie, you got that, those notes?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Nicole, what was the language you said?
Where it had the bulleted list, one individual appointed by the city of Northport as a non-voting member.
We want it to be one individual, meaning city staff?
Well, let's let it be the city manager to make that determination. So when you refer to just the city appointed, it would be city manager.
From our standpoint, we would prefer it to be one of the professional staff, be it someone in neighborhood services. I would hope...
That's logical, but I mean, we need to leave it broad enough that he can make it.
Yes, because staff can...
At the time, here's what my thinking on that, what Vice Mayor is saying is that at the time, you might be dealing with something like utilities, you know, and he'll want utilities department to be there for that conversation or, you know, it might shift in needs versus what your topic of conversation is, so.
As long as we know who to notify. And quite frankly, the city manager may say, it's these three people depending on the issue. And, you know, we just notify all three of them to the meeting and either one of them would show up.
So should we say individuals appointed by city manager with non-vote? Actually, there's a name for it, it's not non-voting. Thank you, ex officio. So ex officio members, ex officio members to be appointed by city manager.
All right, so based on the gist of the conversation, obviously, it's going to be an ex officio appointed by the city manager to sit on this board. I think the language will be left to staff, city attorney, but the gist is one individual appointed by the city manager, ex officio.
I don't, I don't know if I'd go with, I don't know if I'd say just one. I think the city manager may...
At least one.
Yeah, stick with at least one because if you have...
City manager may change that person depending on issues from time to time.
Based on the gist of the conversation, and this has to come back for second reading, so we will see exactly the language that is proposed. Can I get a consensus, Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Karason?
Yes.
I'm a yes?
Yes.
Commissioner? Thank you. And that was a consensus, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Commissioner Karason, because that was also one of my items. All right.
Now can we take the break? Because now I have a...
So right now, it is nine forty-five. We have our little packet. City clerk, did you get a copy of it so that it can be uploaded? Thank you very much. And city attorney and city manager, y'all got copies too? Thank you. All right, at this time, we will reconvene at five after ten. That gives us just about fifteen to twenty minutes. See you back here at five after ten.
All right.
Ms. Heather. All righty, folks, it's ten oh six and we're back. So, if it's okay with the board and staff, maybe we go through these changes first, because maybe some of them are going to satisfy questions that we maybe already got to discuss, um, and I know Commissioner Karason is not back yet, so we'll just plug along. Looking at the first page, which is the definitions, let's get a consensus to that change that they are requesting be made to neighborhood center.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Armrich?
Yes.
All right, so we have consensus on that one. All righty, the regulatory framework. I know we've already made one change on that, and that was about the pattern, um, I'm sorry, the index map, and I am wondering if the rest of the language is okay. I do have one question before we get a consensus on it. What are we gonna do about future village developments? I mean, this is only going up to Village G, what about H, I, J, K, and L? What are they gonna follow, this, this, uh, pattern book?
Yes, they will follow this pattern book.
So, shouldn't it say, and future? Village developments?
I mean, it could, yeah, for, for clarification, I don't think it hurts.
Okay, because if this is supposed to be for the entire West Villages, it would make sense to include future development in those other, and just for the record, is, is Ms. Katie back too?
Oh.
Or is she?
I am.
Yep, she's here.
Okay, just making sure.
I'm here.
After it says Exhibit 3.1. "All other land that lies within the West Villages Improvement District that has not yet obtained VDPP approval shall utilize this pattern book in the preparation of individual VDPPs."
Missed it, thank you. Alright, can I get a consensus to approve the language as presented? Along with the change that we already approved, but this new language, Commissioner Hanks?
I don't really know what you're talking about, are you talking about this page?
Regulatory framework. Yeah, she said that it's already on.
It's already in there.
Yeah, I like the way it's, it's handled, I think that's fine.
Yeah. With the change we made earlier.
Right, the change earlier had to do to the index.
Index map, which is on this page.
Correct.
So, I like the way this is worded.
Fantastic, and Commissioner Amrich?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
So we have a consensus on that, too. Alright, so I'm flipping through the... My next one that I'm seeing that we need to get a consensus on is... The town, I'm sorry. I have a question on the Town Center land requirements. There isn't a page on this document, but it is on Page 41 in this document. To make it easier, it's, it's just the little box with all the minimums and maximums.
Percentages.
Yeah. So, when I went to Section 53212 of the ULDC, the ULDC does not match this box.
That's correct.
And I'm wondering if we're using that section, why doesn't it match?
So, the box that's on the Town Center Standards, Page 9 in the, or Section 9 in the Proposed VDPB, is consistent with the Town Center Standards that have been approved in Villages D and E. In the 53212, I believe I said that right, section right, it says that those are the standards that are to be used unless they are amended by Commission. So Commission has the ability to amend that land use mix, and has done so for Villages D and E.
Okay, you're right?
This, this book trumps the ULDC, not the other way around.
I understand.
Okay.
But if we're referencing ULDC section number, I would think that it has to match it? Or, the changes that we made and approved for Villages E and F, I think?
D and E.
D and E, thank you. What about the other Town Center that's in Village A, on the north side of 41? What are they gonna follow, this or the ULDC?
So, that section of Town Center actually has an approved VDPP. It would have to come back in and amend, and if the language in here is that it would amend with, consistent with this pattern book, then they would be consistent with this table here. Unless you did something.
So... 53212 is the ULDC.
Yes.
And the pattern book, like Vice Mayor said, trumps what ULDC says. So if we keep these minimum and maximums, as from this point going forward, Commission approval won't have to be done for any other Town Centers, correct?
Correct.
Because it'll have to follow this.
Yes.
And this is less stringent than what is in the ULDC.
Correct.
And it does not take into account civic, because this does not include civic.
It, it has parks and open space, but that's...
But civic, to me, is government buildings and stuff like that. So do we keep the reference to 53212? Is it necessary if this is what we're gonna be following?
So the, the reference to 53212 is with the intent of the policy of the Comprehensive Plan. I'd actually probably recommend taking most references to the ULDC, specific code sections out, if possible, because we're about to change a lot of those numbers, so they're gonna be outdated very soon anyways. And just leave it, you know, with the ULDC, as, you know, a broad statement, consistent with ULDC. But it is consistent with the intent of the policy and the intent of that section of the code, which is to provide a broad mix of uses. It's not saying that it's consistent with the percentage numbers in there.
Alright, so, I, I agree with taking out the ULDC reference for the exact same reasons that you were mentioning. I would also like to see the maximum for the land use. The commercial, it says 85. It should probably go back to what the ULDC is, which is 70?
I wouldn't recommend reducing the maximum commercial. That's, we need the diversified taxes, so I wouldn't.
That's true.
I wouldn't recommend reducing that.
Alright, you got me sold on that. Can I get a consensus to remove the reference to ULDC 53212?
The sections?
The section only, yes.
Yeah.
Do we need to remove the sections or the policies of the Comprehensive Plan also?
No, the policies in the Comprehensive Plan are not changing.
Okay, thank you.
And can I ask, is that just for this section, or do we want to do that for the whole document?
Correct.
So to remove references to specific sections of ULDC.
Correct. Can I get a consensus, Commissioner Amrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Karason?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Alrighty, so now we'll move on to...
Can I ask about that specific section?
Sure.
Because I, I too have a problem with this. I would like to see us change the minimum land area requirement for commercial and retail to 40%. That's my first request. It requires them to create more commercial areas within their Town Centers versus 30.
So then, I have to ask, if that is the intent, why did we approve Villages EF and G with lesser commercial space? That I was...
Because I, let me explain something here. I did not know that these references are for the entire Town Center land mass. And I think that these Town Center design principles need to be for the independent Town Center, not the entire Town Center area. So in other words, the Town Centers' majority are in D and E. And when they say 30% of it, they're looking at that in, in its complete portion, where it should be 40% of each Town Center should be commercial and retail services. That's the whole point of Town Centers.
Well, thank you for hearing me a few months late.
Welcome to my world. Few months, few years.
It hurts us tremendously for EF and G that we just approved.
Well, and I agree, but I think that from this point forward...
Yeah, I would definitely say that, but then we would also have to change it to Number 5. Because Number 5 is also at 30%, and Number 5 includes items Number 2, 3, and 4.
Well, that's where that second portion, where it says that it shouldn't reflect the entire Town Center, would be reworded. So, but Commissioner Hanks says...
Okay, Commissioner Hanks, go ahead, please.
Yeah, the reason I didn't have a problem with it was the discussion going on was that times are changing. And so, to look at a footprint today, as in land area, is probably not the proper direction to, to look at moving forward. Possibly looking at, as was discussed then, was a more dense aspect, looking at the square footage of the building. Which was where I even brought up, I believe, you know, if you want to look at possibly incentivizing for areas of, let's say, mitigation, where you could re, re, relax some of the height issues to decide, well, if you'll mitigate so much square footage into parkland or what have you, around it, or, you know, green space, then we'll relax maybe the 2 or 3, 4 height limit. But it's because the way we're moving today, the, the, the land area is not going to determine moving forward. Everything is, I mean, right now, look, look at us now.
Yeah.
Things will change, we are not gonna go, I mean, brick and mortars are not gonna be the same even after coronavirus.
Exactly.
It's gonna be completely different, people are starting to determine that they can work from, from home. Businesses are starting to say, listen, this could, you know, they, they can do that, there's a quality of life issue.
Yep.
So I want to be very careful about requiring more square footage when things are gonna change. Again, I would look at incentivizing more, more, or square acreage. I would incentivize more square footage within building capacity by saying, if you'll create more green space around it, instead of taking up 3 or 4 lots, and I'm just using lots as a simple, a simple term, bring it down to 2, make green space around it, and we'll relax the 3-story height limit to allow for the square footage space that is needed, that they can do as a...
And I agree with you, Commissioner, that's why they changed it from square footage to percentage. And so that's why I don't have a problem with the requested changes, because in that 30% of the land area, it doesn't say 30% has to be, you know, it could be that they have a 4-story building, and within that is all of their 30%. And maybe it needs to be reworded.
I'm in total agreement with Commissioner Hanks, total agreement. I mean, world is changing immensely, it already has in the last 5 years. And after this Corona, it's gonna, it's gonna be changing even more. And this says minimum land area.
Yeah.
It doesn't say anything about square footage, design, anything. It's saying that 30% of that. So, do you want it to just sit there vacant because the world doesn't feel something? I don't want to do that to a business.
What I want is more, is, is the original intent. And the original intent of Town Centers were to add commercial to the diversified economy of our city.
I want a million dollars, too, but, but I don't play the lottery.
But my point is, that was the whole reason, that was the whole reason we annexed this and we allowed it to continue on. So, with that original intent, to add that commercial diversification to our city overall, because you have to have that diversification in order to have a healthy city.
I just think this is the wrong way to do it.
Exactly.
And I'm okay with that. So how do we reword it to, because I agree with you, that, that looking at it as a land area may not be the smartest way to do it. I'm in agreement. But how do we word it so that the commercial is there, but not necessarily hold their hands tied so that it has to be within land?
I think, I, I think you're talking the land in this book, and then when you get down to that nitty gritty of the next, when they come in with their plans, then is when you talk about the square footage. But the way this one is set up, it is talking about the land. So to me, this is fine, it matches what we've already done. And then, as they bring forward these next things, is when you tackle the square footage.
So, I don't have a specific answer for you right now, but I have an idea. This is gonna be coming back for second reading, the second meeting in April, because it has to come to a night meeting. So we've got a little bit of time before this has to go back into the system. Maybe we can look for some ideas on, like, density bonuses, or like Commissioner Hanks said, incentives, and we can present that to you for a second reading.
Love it. And if second reading doesn't happen, that second meeting in April for that, we may have to push it out until May because of the changes that we're making today, and staff needing time to do a little additional research, so...
But Mayor, I don't want to make that change right now.
No, no, it would be between now and the second reading.
And she will come back with ideas and suggestions, right. So let's get a consensus to have staff bring back ideas and suggestions for Town Center Standards Number 9 on Page 41, and then Village Center Standards, which is on Page 45.
Wait, 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 Village, what's that?
Village Standards 45, we, we are, at some point, when we, we already approved adding commercial to Village Centers, so we may need to tweak that also.
You know, I see a different definition between the Village Centers and the Town Centers. To me, the Town Centers are more commercial oriented with a mixed use of residential, commercial, where the Village Centers are more internal, they're more, if they want a pool, or a, or had...
That's more of your neighborhood center.
Okay.
The Village Centers are still commercial, I, I liken the, the Town Center and Village Center to commercial and neighborhood commercial.
Right.
Okay, okay, so...
So maybe we can, let's get a consensus to have, have staff come back with ideas and suggestions to address the commercial on Pages 41 and 45. They may come back and say, "no changes to 45," which is fine, but let's look at them both. Commissioner Amrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Karason?
Yes, but I have one additional after that, yes.
Okay. And Vice Mayor?
I'm alright with it.
And Commissioner Hanks? And I am, yes, also.
The only other thing is that these, these regulations really need to reflect the individual Town Centers and, and Village Centers, not the overall encompassing centers in, in the district itself.
So, what I'm hearing is, instead of looking at this commercial in totality to the entire land mass of the village, you want it to be centrally located as to where it is in the village?
No, no, that, that the principles are only reflective of each Town Center and each Village Center, that it's not in totality. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And I think each, each village had its own VDPP that had the requirements in it, correct?
So, yes, but the Town Center Standards, the 30% is applied on a Town Center overall basis. So, you could theoretically have Town Center in one of the villages that's all residential.
I understand.
So that's, that's what she's, she's discussing.
I agree with Commissioner Karason, that it should be a Town Center, Village by Village basis, not Town Center totality.
I'd like to discuss further with the West Villages and get their input on what that might look like and what impacts that might have on their development plans.
Well, I think it's...
And we could do that for a second reading as well.
And I think it goes hand in hand with incentive issue. You know what I mean? Because you, if you are going to look at it on an independent basis, then those incentives play a huge role.
Yeah.
Because you, I mean, I don't want to see one without the other, I'm not sure how to explain that.
I can explain it very easily. West Villages, a lot of the properties right now is being sold as residential. And that is exactly what happened 50 years ago, 60 years ago, when Northport was being made. It was all residential, very little pocket areas of commercial or industrial. And look where it got us today. I don't want in 50 years, the West Villages to go, "we need more commercial space, we need more industrial space," and then everybody going, "well, where are we gonna put it?" So...
Can I speak?
Vice Mayor?
Commissioner Karason served while this was, a lot of this was going on. And I appreciate her heart in trying to achieve what they set out to do because of the situation that the mayor was just talking about. So I'm very thankful for the history aspect that was put into this. I think it was great addition, so thank you, Commissioner Karason, for pushing toward that. But she does have a heart of trying to accomplish what the city set out to do. And I know times have changed, and we have to tweak what was set out in the beginning. But, yeah, West Village was annexed in for a purpose to the city, and it was a unique thing that was set in place to the entire state at that point in time. So it's just that we need to congeal together, think in the same, keeping that same heart of the purpose for the entire city, but allowing a developer to be able to be successful like we want every other business in the city to be successful. So thank you for everyone's cooperation in this.
And Commissioner, I couldn't agree more, I think that's exactly what we're doing, especially when we took those Town Centers... Especially when we took those town centers and brought them out from having to be internal. We, we realized that there was a change, a shift. And so we went and turned around and allowed them to be external. So it's really not, I agree, change, times have changed. I don't want to put, um, you know, any undue pressure on the district itself uh, to allow it to, to build in the future. And, and I am very well aware of the fact that, that things are completely different. But what has not changed is the fact that we do have a ratio in the city overall that needs to be consistent and that it needs to be diversified. And that was the intent of, you know, of, of this entire project.
Correct. The intent of this city being formed was to be a retirement.
Well.
That was the intent when this first designed.
And then we realized that that would bankrupt you.
Exactly.
So my point is, is so that we are in the best fiscal shape possible now and in the future. We have to make sure that we keep in mind that, yes, things are changing. But in the same token, we have to have a diversification in the economic, uh, baseline, however that looks. And, and that's where I'm okay with a different line.
And I think it can be achieved.
Yes.
Yep.
So let's get a consensus to have staff work with the West Villages on this village by village basis versus town centers in totality for the commercial. Commissioner Emrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Karason, do I even need to ask myself? Yes.
Yes, right. Sorry.
Yes? Okay. Fantastic. All right. So now that, that town center page is finished, moving on through the rest of the PowerPoint. We already took care of the definitions. Now revisions for second reading. Uh, page looks like this. It doesn't have a page number on it. And it says pages ten through eleven, page fifty-eight and page sixty-seven. So before we move on through that, does anybody have any questions on any of those pages mentioned on this?
No. I got all the tabs here that. All right. I, I have a page thirteen.
Okay, not yet. Let's, let's finish up the, the PowerPoint and then we'll go back through.
Well, that was part of the PowerPoint. I wasn't sure whether you got to that yet.
We did that probably way at the beginning.
Okay, well, I have something.
Okay, we'll come back to it.
Backwards. All right. And then what's the next one?
So right now we're on pages ten and eleven, fifty-eight, sixty-seven. It's not in there, ma'am.
No, I know. I was trying to, um. That's just the index map, page ten and eleven.
So basically it starts on fifty-eight because we already agreed to remove the index map and all references.
Fifty-eight. Yes, I have some things in fifty-eight. Let's see.
Fifty-eight.
Nope. I just added, oh, the question, one electronic sign utilizing a hundred percent of the permitted sign area about Tamiami Trail. Is that going to, you know, I go back to those design standards that need to be fluent throughout the entire city. So, uh, should there be some sort of a reference there that it, that it complies with the design standards of the, you know, Tamiami Trail corridor or? I'm not sure.
Say that again?
So they're talking about the changeable copy of electronic signs, which I don't have a problem with. But, um, you know, it's talking about the intersection of Tamiami Trail and West Village Parkway. And my concern is the, is the design standards that we have throughout the city.
Those don't apply to this area of the West Villages. They apply to Activity Center One, and this is not included in any of these. US forty-one architectural corridor.
Right.
Does not extend this far.
It was supposed to.
The, the boundaries that are approved in the Urban Design Standards Pattern Book do not show the West Villages.
Well, ain't that a visitor. Okay.
And that ties back into the West Villages Review Committee and our participation in that.
Okay. Because, um, I, the intent was that there was one unified design standard throughout US forty-one because as you entered into the city, you would know when you hit, you, you know, Northport and you would know when you exited. So that was kind of the whole intent of it. How that got lost in the shuffle is beyond me. But as far as the signs, I don't, I'm, I'm good with it.
Does anybody else have any questions on page fifty-eight?
I just wanted to.
Oh, I didn't see him come up, sorry.
More just kind of FYI. We are working with our Department of Transportation really to try to attenuate speed along forty-one, basically from River Road to the west end of the city. And some of that is through contextual landscape design, which would change obviously what's landscape in the right of way. We're trying to, I mean, sometimes the state doesn't move as fast as we do. We are trying to tie that together with what you will see in the coming months is our, basically our design and landscaping along forty-one from basically Island Walk to West Villages Drive, right? So kind of the combination of the two. You'll be seeing those shortly and how we are trying to tie all that together, even though we're stepping apart from what the city has at the Activity Center. And that'll be something we will bring our designers, Stan, Kevin, and Kim with Warren in. And we will, we're just going to start working with staff as we get to the next step with the town center. I just wanted to add, some of that stuff we are already working on and you'll see shortly.
Okay, but your design standards are going to be solely within the district, which will separate its visual, um, appearance from the city. And I guess that's what has always been kind of one of our, our, our focuses when we had tried to design, have a, a consistent design standard of city center green and the blue signs, that it was going to be all along, uh, from end to end. And in fact, that's why we made the monument sign that was recently taken down, very similar to what we had in West Villages. Because it would be, you knew when you entered Northport, you knew when you left. So my concern is that if the design standards within the village area is different than the rest of city proper, there will be a definitive difference. And, and there's enough of that us versus them. Let's face it.
I would hope, partly because of timeframe that we're working on and some of the goals we're trying to do to attenuate speed as well as creating, scraping downtown. It will provide a platform, partly because we're going to implement some of this stuff within the next twenty-four months. The goal is actually implementing it all in the next twenty-four months. They didn't give a platform for the city. Maybe to look at some of the standards going for the east and up, you know, revising and modifying. Maybe we can tie it together because I believe we're gonna be looking at a higher standard that currently is thought on.
So then we have to. Okay. Because we've already given direction to our route and drainage to start changing some things along US forty-one, so we may.
Not the signs, not the poles.
But we did do something with that.
Poles are only going for Activity Center One for changing it to green because the poles were already ordered and stuff and they're not our poles.
Right.
Those are staying the West Villages colors.
Yeah, no, I was talking about the other areas of US forty-one in the city, not the West Village area and that.
They are separate colors.
Yeah, I know. This is what I'm trying to explain is that they need to be uniform, like the design standards need to be uniform. So we'll, we'll wait until that all comes back and then.
Yeah, we'll start bringing some things in and.
We may have to start, we may have to look at our particular design standards and try to find a way to morph that so it does look more, so it is.
And there's always going to be some differences, like.
Oh, absolutely.
That's extending the trail sidewalk along forty-one, and we're doing the same thing along Village D. Ours is a little wider and curves and more serpentine. There's a straight close to the pavement. So there's always going to be differences.
Yes.
But through quality and landscape architecture design, if we can reach common goals and make it feel like it all belongs together, even though they may be different.
Yeah. I mean, they're not different, but yeah.
Right, they may, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I get what you're saying. Okay. All right. I'm all right with that then. I'm good.
Can I ask a question? Um, the, the language that is in the proposed VDPB, is that for the changeable copy, uh, for the sign, is that all coming out and then you're inserting these few lines?
No, it's, it's just adding, um, the last part or as permitted by the ULDC, whichever is greater, to what's already in there. That way, if we change our code to allow more than sixty percent at some point in the future, they still get that benefit.
But we just removed everything, all references to the ULDC.
Section.
The specific sections, not the ULDC.
I just want, okay. All right. So this is okay for me. Do we have a, anybody else have a question about this changeable copy sign? Can I get a consensus then to approve the language proposed for the, uh, changeable copy electronic signs as they presented?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Yes. All right. I do have a question. It says here also under page fifty-eight. Uh, village perimeter walls.
Thank you.
I do not see that on, I see it on page sixty-five. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something in, in this book. It says village perimeter walls delete the last sentence regarding chain link fencing. And I don't see chain link fencing anywhere mentioned on page fifty-eight. I do see village perimeter walls on page sixty-five.
Yeah, I think that's the section that, um, was intended to be referenced here. Katie, can you confirm that?
I can confirm that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so that's for page sixty-five.
Okay, so you want to remove chain link fencing may only be allowed if treated with vinyl cladding and landscaped with a continuous hedge at the base. Why, why would you want to delete that?
It would, I believe, not allow chain link fencing at all.
It doesn't say that.
Yeah.
Help us.
So if we went back to make changes.
You're going to have to move closer to the mic, please. You keep scooching further away. I know. Hang on one second, hang on one second. Does that mic work? Okay, maybe.
I was only kidding about, trust me.
Well, no, I wanted to be respectful of your concern. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Because we were making, we made the change after the December fifth meeting where we went back and added into history. We've kind of been going through this and just scrubbing it. And one of the things we've seen here in the last two weeks, chain link fence. Quite frankly, as things have evolved, particularly over the last year, we're seeing a clear focus on what we want that area of the city to look like. It came up to us with chain link fence. We would never allow chain link fence. So we just want to get it out of the book entirety.
Okay, so if, if you are adamant about not allowing chain link fence, why not just then say no chain link fence will be allowed?
We're just taking it out because it's, right now it says here's what's allowed. We're taking that out all day.
The previous sentence says that village perimeter wall shall be constructed primarily as masonry walls and may be accented with wood or wrought iron upon approval of the WBRC. So by removing that last sentence, that's the only type of perimeter wall that would be permitted.
Well, I don't consider a fence a wall.
Yeah, that's, that's what they're taking it out so that it's not considered.
Well, right, we wanted to clarify it. Now, that does not mean there may not be chain link fence around a lift station that is landscaped. But for the perimeter walls for a neighborhood or a village, we do not want, we want to have a more upscale feeling.
So can I?
I'm in agreement.
Can I get a consensus to go ahead and remove the mention of chain link fence under the village perimeter walls that's on page sixty-five? Commissioner Emrich?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Karason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Vice Mayor and Commissioner Hanks. All right. Now we'll move on to page sixty-seven.
Again, I don't see that either, by the way.
I'm sorry, see what?
I didn't see sixty-seven reference either.
It is. Uh, if you go to B. Frontage yard may contain. It says here, frontage yard shall include. But where exactly are you looking to add about this fifty percent sod?
Katie, do you have a specific location that you want to add this to?
We would, we would include it in section B.
Be like boy?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
So it's additional language?
Yes.
Correct.
All right. Can I get a consensus? And I'm sure staff will outline where it's going to fit nice and cozy. Can I get a consensus for them to be able to add the language about, uh, the fifty percent sod? Uh, Commissioner Hanks?
To what?
May add the language to item be like a boy on page sixty-seven about fifty percent sod. Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor? Yes? Um, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. So we took care of that. We're almost done with your PowerPoint, Miss Katie. We're getting there. All right. Um, page seventy-two.
I have a question.
Fantastic. So let's all just go to page seventy-two. It's regarding the interior landscaping. Um, Vice Mayor, go ahead, please.
The only question I have is clarify that palm trees will not exceed twenty-five percent of the canopy tree requirement. Uh, wondering what the thought process is behind that because currently it says a cluster of three palms count as a canopy tree. So are you wanting to add that? You can't have any more than twenty-five percent of canopy trees equal or be palm trees?
That's correct. It would be, the, the cluster of three would still count as one, but at, up to a maximum of twenty-five percent if they're required.
So there's still be added language?
Yeah.
So if there's one hundred canopy trees necessary, only.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five clumps of three.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent.
Poms. No, twenty-five of the one hundred. So you'd have seventy-five, but there are clumps of twenty-five. Okay. I, thank you for that clarification.
Does anybody else have a question regarding the palm trees? Can I get a consensus to approve adding language to page seventy-two regarding, um, the palm trees shall not exceed, exceed twenty-five percent of the tree requirement?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I'm in agreement with that.
All right. So now we'll move on to the added language about landscaping requirements. Um, I do have a question on that, but I'll defer to the board first to see if they have any questions on it.
Nope.
All right. This actually was in the PSAB, maybe not this exact language, but in the PSAB, um, document, which was removed, and this was one of my questions I was going to ask. In the PSAB, it said though, a maximum of twenty parking spaces. And I'm wondering, um, reducing it down to ten. Is, is that truly what you guys want? Because the first one, it was the twenty.
Yes. Yes, this is what we want, we want. And quite frankly, we're trying, we want to put a little more limitations on it. We want things to look better. But some of this is evolving out of what we're designing right now for our downtown. And if we're going to make that investment to downtown to look a certain way, we want that feeling to continue throughout development. So this was a thoughtful addition here in the last couple of weeks.
And this brings it into, um, consistent with what the code requires in terms of those landscape islands.
Okay, so in, in the language, it says that they, a, a parking island, okay, so the max, a maximum of ten parking spaces may be provided with an island at the end of each parking row. So that to me is saying, eh, maybe you'll have a parking island, eh, maybe you won't. So if you're trying to make it very strict and stringent, why don't we change that may into a shall?
Because it's got to be flexible too. Because not all islands are going to be the same. It all depends on what the actual.
The intent is the shall.
That's what I heard when you said you wanted.
That, that is the intent. I, I understand how the wording, you know, is, you may have a row that has twenty-five spaces. I think the intent was trying within a row to work on that language, but the intent is shall. Katie, do you see a problem with that?
I do not. I, I think that it's reasonable to change it from may to shall.
All right, we'll make that change.
All right.
Where was that again?
It says a maximum of ten continuous parking spaces shall be provided with an island. Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, comments? All right. The, I, I hang on one second, parking space, okay, we already covered that. So can I get a consensus to approve the language as presented, changing the may to shall? Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Karason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
I will do so because they complied stating that they're all right with changing it, otherwise I was fine with it the other way because you might run into an incident where you can't. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hanks?
I'm saying yes, because I would.
And I'm a yes, so thank you for that.
And you try, just one minute, yeah, these landscape changes. We brought on about the beginning of the year, a new internal team member. He's a licensed landscape architect and planner. So we're internally reviewing these type of things, and some of the, a lot of these changes are his recommendation. I'm not a landscape architect, I know what I like, what I don't like. And a big part of Jeremy's focus is to make sure these documents working with Katie and Stan Tech envisioning the goals we are taking the whole community to. And obviously, we can't have our consultants being in every internal meeting. You know, so that's another added level of expertise we've added to the team. And he's actually driven a lot of these comments.
It shows.
I can tell.
It shows.
Well, and I just want you guys to know, we're doing this in a thoughtful manner because we want to get to that goal.
Thank you. All right, so let's, I think we're getting towards the end here. We got page seventy-three. It says clarify the land between wheel stops and delete the last sentence. And, um, interior landscape requirements. I don't, I don't see interior landscape requirements on page seventy-three for non-residential and mixed use development.
This is Katie, it's on, the, the title's on page seventy-two.
Okay.
The sentence that I'm referring to that we would delete is the last sentence on page seventy-three.
The last sentence I'm seeing is, uh, parallel parking spaces located adjacent to landscape areas.
That's correct. We would delete that sentence and we would replace it with the language that you see in the slide.
Okay, I need to go back to school and learn how to read. Thank you. Is everybody okay with this additional language and deleting that sentence?
Yes, I'm good. Yes.
Is everybody okay with clarifying the area between the wheel stop and landscape area to be planted and irrigated?
Yes.
Yes, I'm good.
On page seventy-four, minimum planting requirements for commercial mixed use. Anybody have questions or comments?
Hold on, I'm still reading from seventy-three. Seventy-four, seventy-four, no, I'm good with that.
Everybody okay with that first part, that first bulleted, I'm sorry, on seventy-four, the new revised language?
Yes.
Ms. Katie, I believe we are finished with your PowerPoint. Does anybody, did I miss anything for anybody else on the PowerPoint only?
The treat, the modifications of street trees and tree canopy, is that part of it, or that's already reflected in the change?
That's, yeah, that was in the document from the very beginning, it's just highlighted for your, your attention.
Gotcha.
Notory number four, let's go back to that and revisit it.
So I have, um.
What page is that again?
Hold on, I gotta look at my sticky notes here, because I got a bunch of them. So the first one is, yes, is page thirteen about the framework. And I would just suggest that, um, we already got that land use mixes provided when this document apply to any future, and it will not apply to any future annexations. Oh, no, we don't have that in there. Okay, so this needs to only apply to the district as it is today. But if there is an intent to expand those district boundaries or annex other lands into the city within that district, then this would need to be amended. Does that make sense?
Would, 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 is states already covered if something new was annexed in? Because it says future district properties.
I think what Commissioner Karason is trying to say is that if they annex future lands in, she wants the whole thing to be reevaluated. Or not the whole thing, but anything that affects those future annexed lands to be evaluated and not just automatically fall within this VDPB.
Right. Because then you're gonna have to look over the district and its, and its, um, framework and.
Possibly. It could possibly be covered by an annexation agreement, but.
It could be, but I just don't want it to be an automatic, is what I'm trying to get at. If you want to write it in there that, you know, framework or, or that, um, the, the pattern book would be amended per annexation agreement, I don't know how you want to word it, but I think that this should not apply to anything that's possibly added in the future.
Can I hear your thought process on that?
Because.
Because to me, I think the opposite.
Because in the future, you're gonna have to look at, um, you know, that diversification of economy again. If you're going to, one, say that they annex a large number of acreage into the city as well as into their district. And they want to put a majority of it to government use per se, and it's untaxable. And then they choose not, choose not to have the commercial side of things and make it all residential. Then it kind of offsets the rest of the district and the intent of having that diversification. They could also put, you know, affordable housing, which is, you know, like, wait, I'm way out
No, 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 no.
thirty years down the road, you see what I'm saying?
Right, but the WVAD boundary is legally set.
Correct.
The only person that's not in the city that's in that boundary that we control is the forty-four acres and that's already a activity center.
One.
Right, at this point.
Right. The dish, to, to make that type of structural changes, the district boundaries will have to change.
Exactly.
Which would take state
Right.
action.
Right.
That's, yeah, that's what she's referring to.
Right.
Right.
If that were to happen in the future.
So all we would do is limit any future changes to the district boundaries. Not necessarily what comes into Northport. I mean, it'd have to be both, right?
It would have to be both. It would have to be the, it would have to be the, the expansion of district boundary, boundaries that are within the city of Northport.
Yeah, that's such a dramatic change, putting such a few in the air, conception, I don't have an issue with.
Right.
I mean.
I'm just, it's just about CYA, because we all may be gone. You know what I mean?
Katie, do you understand that concept?
It's the cloud.
I do. I, uh, I do, and, um, I mean, as, as you've been talking, I mean, I have two suggestions to try to overcome Commissioner Karason's concerns. One would be to modify that sentence to say, all other land that is illustrated on the index map that has not obtained VDPP approval. Another alternative that I've thought of is to limit it to the village land use category and zoning district or the official zoning map. So either of those, I think, would.
Can you say that again, Katie? We're having trouble hearing you.
Okay. The solution, the, one of the solutions to Karason's concerns could be to reword the sentence to say, all other land that are identified on the index map that have not obtained VDPP approval shall rely upon this pattern dog.
That's totally opposite of what my concern is.
Can we just say, let Nicole and Katie work on some language?
Yes.
I think we understand the concept, and I'm sure Nicole can run against legal to make sure everybody's comfortable with, but we understand the concept.
You get what I'm saying, yeah, thank you.
So, so how do we? So the consensus, and, and help me with the consensus, Commissioner Karason.
So I think it would be that all future district boundary changes within the context of the city of Northport would not be automatically under this district, uh, pattern.
All right, can I get a consensus based on what Commissioner Karason just said?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so staff and West Villages will work on that. And we have a consensus.
Okay, and then, let's see, we already did that. That's it for that page. And then I go on to the next page.
Wait, 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 uh, let's.
It's still in section four.
I know, hold on, hang on one second. Are you finished with everything then?
On that page.
With the PowerPoint?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, because we, because you missed the beginning part, I wanted to make sure everything we were clear on, so.
Well, the PowerPoint framework was just changing the VDPP language, and I, and that's not a problem. That was actually one of the things I was gonna ask for, so it kind of took away a sticky note.
So let's now just move into individual questions, concerns, page by page if we need to, probably might be the easiest way to do it, I don't know. And I will start with Commissioner Karason. Do we want it, do we want to just do a page by page, guys?
I have. I'm done with my questions.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
Yeah, I have about five more concerns, that's all.
Go ahead. See if you cover whatever.
So, on page fourteen, where it talks about in furtherance of interpretation by the city and ULDC, and then it, I just think that should all be completely stricken, that future VDPPs, shouldn't even have this language.
I agree.
Can you clarify where you're at?
The, in, it's one, two, three, four, five, about the sixth paragraph down or second from the bottom.
So in furtherance of the interpretation authority granted by City of Northport Comp Plan, Unified Land Development, Zoning Admin, shall have the authority administratively approved modifications initiated by master developer of standards and the conceptual design layout contained within the VDPP, the zoning administrator may impose, and I am skipping through, reasonable mitigation measures, adjustment of standards, that they're able to have added authority administratively, they can modify, they can modify the master plan. There is an awful lot of authority given to the designated land development manager when all of these changes ultimately need to come before the commission. And that's my problem.
My only question, that's more the question on that, it is my understanding that language is in all the approved VDPPs.
D through G.
Huh?
D through G, I agree.
Only D through G.
Only D through G.
Right, and so it shouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Commissioner Karason, just, I had the exact same question as to what is this about, why is this in here, who this person is, and why would we delegate that authority? Those were my kind of, my questions along the same lines as yours. So I'm okay with removing that paragraph.
I would like to hear Nicole's thoughts.
I have no issue with this paragraph being removed. Um, I believe this language was proposed by Marty when he was here, and I, he.
That's why she wants it removed.
Oh, my gosh. I, I remember he explained the reasoning behind it at one point during one of these hearings. I just honestly don't remember what it was, but I don't see a need for, for that authority to be granted to myself or to the zoning administrator, so. I have no issue with it being removed.
I think we go back to that liability, too. That's my big, you know.
Can I get a consensus to remove that paragraph that starts with in furtherance? And ends with ad permitted uses, it's that whole entire paragraph?
Is West Village all right with it being removed also then?
Again, we're either working with you or not, so I have no problem with it. And since it's only affects, really after the amendment, it'll only affect Villa G really, because we can take it out of the updates for P, uh, F and G that were coming through.
Yeah, I don't know why we approved it in D and G, but I'm gonna call dumb on that myself, so, there you go.
All right, can I get a consensus to remove it? Commissioner Emmerich?
Yeah, I got no issues.
Obviously, Commissioner Karason's a yes, I'm a yes, Vice Mayor?
Again, I'm a yes because West Village has consented also.
Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing that up because I was going to.
Okay, this is also where we need to make sure that the WVRC includes the, the staff that we already.
Yeah, we already got that consensus.
Um, and that, um, that's it for that section. And then I go to page, let me take that sticky note off or else I'll just keep going back. Page twenty-one is my next. Page twenty-one, where we talk about the roadways and pathways, and really it's just kind of some cleanup, is that, um, West Villages will comfortably and safely accommodate vehicular, pedestrian, blah, blah, blah. That's one.
Want a consensus?
I want to see if, if this is okay with West Villages first, and then we can do.
Thank you.
You know what I mean?
Where you're at again?
So on page twenty-one, we talk about roadways and pathway standards. And so in the very first sentence, it says that, you know, West Villages will comfortably accommodate vehicular pedestrian, but I think it needs to say villages will comfortably and safely accommodate vehicular pedestrian, neighborhood electric vehicles, so on and so forth.
Engineering me wants to push back, just the concept I agree with, but we have over the next six or seven pages cross-sections that others have kind of determined what is safely.
Right.
You know, your definition of safe and city managers may, you know, maybe.
But this is your standard, and your standard is followed throughout the rest of the way to be determined as safe.
I'm just cautious that, you know, the standards we've shown on the cross-section have been deemed to be safe.
Right.
Think everything.
You know, I don't know if we're adding something there or changing the intent of the cross-sections.
No, because your cross-sections are already determined to be safe, so it, what, it's actually supporting what you've already done, is what I'm trying to get at. Your standards are to be safe and to accommodate vehicular pedestrian travel.
You maybe add something that just cross-references those cross-sections? Which are on pages. Which are on pages twenty-two through whatever, starting at this document. I just wanna be careful there that we're not adding, again, this is one of those unintended consequences, by adding one word, we open ourselves up to any legality. I'd like to run that, ask the district's attorney, Lindsay Whalen.
City Attorney, do you, do you see? You're giving me the look, forget it. Okay, fine. I know what that look means, forget it. All right, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I thought she was intently listening.
No, no, that was a look of don't make me answer that question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I would, I would assume, okay, um, that West Villages is doing everything with the utmost safety in mind of their residents.
Yeah, it is the intent, and that's why we have all these cross-sections there.
So I think what Commissioner Karrison, and I'm not trying to speak for her, is that she's trying to use this overreaching, very top of the barrel, this is our intent, to be comfortable, safe, and accommodate these, in roadways. I don't think she is trying to say this is not safe or that is not safe.
No, 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 I just wanna make sure us adding the word doesn't have any unintended consequences that we don't want.
Legally, I get what you're saying.
I just wanna run it.
Yeah.
Pass the WVID attorney to make sure they don't believe this change. She may say, add that word, but then further in the paragraph, cross-reference those cross-sections. She may say it's fine, I don't know. I just, I don't wanna say, hey, I agree no matter what.
No, I gotcha.
But the intent, I don't disagree with.
So what?
Can I just add to that? Is, I would hope that anything that we do, you're gonna look over with the attorney to make sure that it's.
Well, and that's why I say, you know, I will question, I put safely, question mark, Lindsay, look at.
And our mission and all of this stuff with the, with the city brings in safety and they fall under that too.
Right.
I'm gonna be the devil's advocate and I just pull out comfortably and just state West Villages will accommodate vehicular, blah, 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 blah. Why do you have to define?
Comfortably and safely.
Exactly.
Because it's their standards, so.
Well, we'll run it past Lindsay and if there's a question, Lindsay and, uh, city attorney can speak to that. Is that okay, Amber?
So do we wanna get a consensus to have staff and West Villages come back with the addition of the word safely or not?
I have.
Or have an answer.
I have a couple more within that same area that you may just wanna combine because they may have the attorney have to.
I didn't realize that you had others.
Discuss. So, and in the last paragraph, it talks about the very last sentence, the roadways and pathways depict improvements that may be eligible for impact fee.
Yeah, that one's fine, that one's fine.
Right, uh, and mobility fee credits or reimbursements. And.
Change the word are to maybe.
Okay, so it would be to depict improvements that may be eligible for impact fee and mobility credits or reimbursable or, or reimbursement and are constructed, blah, blah, blah. So we're adding a few words. Okay.
All right, can I get a consensus to add the language outlined by Commissioner Karrison in various places on page twenty-one, section six? Commissioner Emmerich?
I'll say yeah, pending the approval of, when it comes back.
Fantastic. Uh, obviously Commissioner Karrison's a yes, I'm a yes, Vice Mayor?
I agree with Commissioner Emmerich as long as they're working it out and bring it back.
And Commissioner.
And I'm with Emmerich and Lyd, same way.
And I am with them also.
Okay, then. Yeah, I know this sounds like nitpicking, but I'm sorry, this has been an extremely extensive process that's lasted twenty years.
Oh, I don't.
And I know the importance of it, and so that's what my concerns are. Next is page thirty-four. And we talk about the neighborhood residential concept.
Whereabouts are you, ma'am?
Number four.
Thank you.
And, um, it says each neighborhood should be designed so residents are within a one-half mile radius of neighborhood center where appropriate. And I just have a note here that we need to address the definition, that the area, that there should be an area set aside for commercial development and civic space.
We, we made that change to the definition.
That's part of that change in definitions, okay, thank you. And then the last note I have here is when it talks about the up to ten model homes. Um, and then it talks about parking spaces at the very end of that paragraph. It needs to be, um, parking spaces must be removed.
Changing the should to shall.
Uh, correct.
I'm sorry, I lost my place when I, where were you again, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, uh, the second to last paragraph of resi- of that page, and literally the last sentence of that paragraph where it talks about uh, the pattern book, and then it says upon completion of sales, parking spaces should be removed, it needs to say shall be removed. Talking about the modal, mobile homes and the parking spots and, only because I've seen what's happened over the years and they need to be removed.
And let's get a consensus for that, Commissioner Emmerich? I'm a yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a consensus.
Okay.
Ms. Kate, uh, Ms. Heather, did you get the, thank you. All right, next one.
All right. Let's see here. Oh, page thirty-five, all right, so we've got, we're talking about the no outside antennas.
I, I talked about this with the consultant, it actually does reference the off-site noise impacts. So it's, shall be located to minimize off-site noise, it, 'cause impacts and contained to, or shielded to minimize visibility, so both are referenced there.
Because it says no outside antennas, antenna poles, blah, 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 as approved by, my concern was that this was very limiting and that maybe you could put when, when applicable, no outside poles, because if you have a community center and, uh, technology's going to become extremely important, even more than it has been, you may want to put some sort of a, a pole out there that, that you can't even detect. They have some of them that look like trees.
Well, well, and that's why we say unless screened from view or is approved by the design.
Okay, so, so it doesn't limit you, okay, good. That was.
It tries to build in future flexibility for technological advancements.
Good, good, 'cause that was my only concern, is that it was gonna limit you. Um, and then in the very last sentence, we talk about, uh, air conditioners, and it talks about shielded to minimize visibility, we should add and abate sound?
That's the one I was, I thought you were talking about first.
That's what you were talking about, okay.
Yeah, it says minimize off-site noise impacts in the first sentence. It's, it's in there already.
Gotcha, all right, and then, uh, manufacturer installation and maintenance standards and codes of the city of Northport uh, that the equipment shall comply, but I don't even know if that's needed. I think that's kind of.
You get a permit.
Yeah, you gotta permit, okay. It's been a while since I read this over, so now with all the changes, I'm not sure what's relevant and what isn't. Uh, page thirty-nine is the town ville- uh, town and village center provisions. And, um, this may actually already have been addressed, but, um, we, uh, the second paragraph, it talks about integrated mixed-use buildings, and then at the very last sentence, any residential unit that is developed within a mixed-use building shall be counted towards the overall entitlement for West Villages, and I am assuming that means just the residential entitlement or, um.
Any residential unit.
But it has the parking included, right? Isn't, I had a problem with this and I, now I'm kinda pulling a blank here.
So, with, the way that we calculate the land use mix right now, because it's based on land area, if a parcel is being used for a commercial purpose, that whole parcel counts towards the commercial land use. We're not looking at a square footage basis, which is something we've talked about trying to get to, we're just not there yet. Um, so this is saying in the case of a mixed-use building, if the first floor is commercial, that parcel counts towards the land use mix being commercial. But we also are going to count the resident, any residential units that are on the other upper stories against their entitlements of the sixteen thousand four hundred.
So is that?
Fair.
Absolutely.
They get to count it as commercial, but we're also taking it away from their total number of residential.
Okay, 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 all right, so then at the very last, the very last paragraph, public nonprofit and institutional uses are permitted and shall count toward non-residential and or residential density. And I guess that I, I just kind of wonder if we, I worry about these properties being removed from the tax rolls without, you know, city approval. So how do we, how do we work that out? Because, um, I have to wonder if we shouldn't be removing the entire thing completely or have it that it's approved by not only the master developer but also the city commission?
Yeah.
Uh, there's gotta be a way to address that because we can't continue to give, um, large parcels away to nonprofits or, or the school board.
I see what you're saying, Commissioner Karrison.
So, um.
So instead of just being approved by the developer, it gets approved by commission?
Mm-hmm. Sp- specifically when it impacts the tax roll is really what my concern is. So can we?
Commissioner Karrison, this is.
Yeah.
Katie Labarre. Um, the purpose of the language is really to help clarify that the entitlements that are conferred to West Villages belong to West Villages, and should any other uses, public, nonprofit, or institutional, be proposed, they would have to go through an evaluation by staff and be presented to the city commission for approval. And so this is really to protect the entitlements of West Villages.
So I appreciate that, and you have entitlements, but the entitlements never, ever were to give away sixty-four acres or whatever it was to, uh, a non-taxable entity. So with that said, we need to be very careful.
Can you explain that comment?
We were, we were told that there was going to be a large portion of property given to the school board, where originally it was supposed to be a smaller portion, and now it's going to be larger, which will be removed from our tax rolls. Get what I'm saying?
Current, right, current, if that way I can address it, have it.
Okay.
Currently, there is a sixty-acre site directly north of the Braves Stadium, which the school district had planned for a K two A facility.
Mm-hmm.
It is, quite frankly, probably not the best place to put a school when you got spring training. Currently, they have a need for a high school site, so they're looking at us acquiring that sixty acres from them and then putting a mixed-use site somewhere within the property so they can build a second high school with it, the foreseeable future.
Right.
There is no agreement with that in place.
No, and that's.
They've been going so, we are planning for that, we've been working with them on a site along Minnesota Beach Road in Village K.
And so, thank you, and so here is what my problem is. You put that site within the city boundaries, you take it off the tax rolls, and you will be only serving those who live within your southerly district boundary in Inglewood, and so.
Why wouldn't it serve a bigger, you're just saying 'cause the Northport High School.
Because of the area, correct. And i- it's never going to serve the, the, the city proper, it won't. They don't even go to the regional park down there, bottom line. So, but in the meantime, we have already done our comprehensive plan, we have planned out this district to have a proportionate amount of commercial, residential, and taxable income that's going to come from it that supports its being there. So now you keep removing parcels, and I'm not saying you in general, you get what I mean? That come off that taxable amount of money that was supposed to be there. If that happens, we need to be the decision-makers because that was not the original plan.
I could sit here and argue with you, quite frankly.
You could.
A school, quality schools within the community will enhance the overall value, will increase the sales pace, so, I mean.
You could try.
I have an idea.
Uh-oh.
Nicole, she looks like she has a light bulb moment that might help solve this.
So, one of the things that's good about the relocation of the school site is that it puts that sixty acres back available in town center. The new location is not taken from town center, which is, if we're going to have property come off the tax rolls, we want it to not be off of the commercial areas. So in order to incentivize that in future locations of public or institutional, um, what if we put, added a line to the land use mix and put a cap, no minimum, but a maximum land area for those types of uses?
Where do you add on that?
On, so if we, on page nine, if we took, um, the town center standards.
Page nine.
Section, no, you mean sections.
Section nine, sorry.
Oh, section, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
And put a maximum for public, institutional, nonprofit.
It doesn't even have that listed.
She's saying add it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause we got to.
'Cause this can be amended by commission.
I like that, okay.
That would be fine, and just to go one step further on, uh, Commissioner Karrison, when we've been talking with the school district, actually the location, and we would show this on the index plan update, which is ready to come to you.
Mm-hmm.
We added, I think, forty acres immediately adjacent for a commercial type use. It was just how the land worked out, it became a perfect corner that wasn't on the July update. So that update you'll see on the index plan whenever we can get in front, in front of you again, will show a fair amount of those type of changes already that you did not see in, uh, July.
Well, and, and understand that it's not about what's happening right now, it's about what has the potential to happen in the future.
Well, no, 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 but I'm talking about, we're clarifying, it's, it's things about.
Yes.
We are adding, and we're very cognizant of your concerns, and we're adding some of those areas that now make sense for those type of uses, will be on the, are on the updated index plan. We just couldn't get the plank.
Right, 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 I getcha. So I really like that idea of adding on page forty-one.
Would be the maximum that you would suggest.
I'd, I'd wanna look at the numbers in order to figure that out. I'd like to have the flexibility to come back to the recommendation for a second reading.
That's what I was looking for.
Mm-hmm.
So can I get a consensus to have staff look at the numbers and add to the chart a public nonprofit category with a zero minimum and a question mark for what that maximum would be?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it, uh, but we are discussing these entities being in the town center. Why don't you just put them outside the town center?
It's, I'm gonna, we're gonna let, that's the whole point, let staff figure out how to do that.
Fantastic.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, I'm fine with looking into that, but if you don't allow them in the town center and they have to go into the other area. I mean, you're, you're permitting it by putting it in there.
The potential issue with that is that this would not only be schools, but it would be other government buildings. And as you'll see on one of the future items, one of the government buildings is proposed to be in the town center. It's not a large amount, but I think we need to look at that a little more carefully, because it, it would be public, nonprofit, and institutional, anything that could potentially come off the tax rolls.
Churches.
So you don't necessarily want to, yeah, just completely exclude that.
Hospitals.
I like, I like that you're gonna come back, and we'll have a bigger discussion based on what y'all come up with. So I got a consensus three here, Vice Mayor. Okay, so we have a full consensus on that. Anything else?
What's good for the goose is good for the gander, and if we're gonna be cutting out everybody else, we can cut out government too.
Well, that is part of it.
Yeah.
Part of it, that's where your maximum percentage lies. You're absolutely right. Okay, so that's it with that one. And we already talked about the percentage on commercial and retail, and that you're gonna look for the incentives in the long run. We got that taken care of, okay. So we'll move on to, I only have two more, guys.
Oh, boy.
Hey, you know what? Shut it. So I'm looking at page fifty-three, which is actually a reference on page seventy-eight. And this goes back to that conversation we were having about the continuity of the design standards, be it the US forty-one, River Road, you know, traffic lights, streetlights, sidewalks, to kind of have a continuity of the citywide. So, I'm not sure if there should be a design standard reference on main roads that are adjacent to, you know, the city proper. So, I don't know how to address this one, honestly. That's bottom line. But I do want a continuity of some sort, I know there's gonna be some sort of diversification, but I, the idea is not to have it look like you're entering a different city, I guess is really what the, the point is.
Can I, can I speak to that? I was oblivious to these light pole signals, whatever, as you're driving through these intersections. Before coming onto this data, I have heard so much about these variation of colors of these poles, that I actually drove forty-one one day up and down to see what the various colors were. And yes, West Village has county colors. You go from black in Venice, brown in the unincorporated. You got West Village using brown, you go into Northport. I mean, it, there, it definitely shows you which area you're driving in when you're on forty-one. Because you go from a city, you know, from a county into a city, back into the county, into another city. And these poles tell you. I mean, you can look at it and you know where you're at. So, I have an understanding of, I don't know, it's a prideful thing, I guess. I mean, when West Village, that portion of West Village anyhow is within Northport, it'd be kind of cool that they have the same poles as the rest of Northport, the color. The, everything else, I got no problem with.
Exactly.
I got no problem other than the color of the pole, and that's it.
Well, and I think, I think that West Villages has set a design standard that we as a city need to move up to, not the other way. And so I guess that, just to clarify, that there's a unification throughout those main corridors. You know, we need to kind of.
That's why I almost prefer not to handle it here.
Yeah.
We're close, we're gonna be in the next forty-five, sixty days, working with the polls and purchase on all that landscape architecture.
Yeah.
Hardscape for town center, which to the degree, you know, we're managing with what's done at Island Walkway and Paradiso. I'd rather deal with it at that point, instead of trying to stick some language here.
That's why I said I wasn't sure how to.
Creativity, I mean, we have calls every week with our designers.
Well, you have a consistent color scheme, or throughout the main roadways, okay.
I think that the inclusion of the city staff on the distribution really helps, you know, identify that. We can kind of help point things out that they may not have thought about, you know, like, hey, if you did this, it'd be a little more consistent with the rest of the city, or, you know.
We'll make the comments, some of the city light poles, I'm not a fan of.
Oh, I agree. I agree. And I guarantee you, they're the ones that we got from FDOT for.
No, I think these are.
Probably. Oh, I wouldn't doubt it.
You don't like green.
No, I don't like the fixtures themselves.
Yeah, the fixtures. Okay.
The picture on West Village and Parkway or Fredo, well, I think there's way too many of them. I hope that is a nice-looking fixture.
So did you want to make any changes to this page fifty-three, or?
No, I, you know, I think I'm gonna leave that alone. I think since, considering there's other things coming up, that we'll work on it then. Because again, I think that you guys are setting the standard that the rest of us should follow. And that's because you're, it's just gorgeous, so. And then the next one is fifty-six. This is one that's kind of imperative, that I have fought long and hard for, and I'm not gonna give up on this one, is to make certain that these Gateway Monument signs continue to have the word "City of Northport" on it.
Those are your signs?
We know, but there's been, in the past, fights trying to get the name "Northport" taken off those monument signs. So, I want it to be very clear that Gateway Monument signs must include "City of Northport" per previously agreed to.
I didn't even go further, there's three of them out there now. We have no intention of putting new ones in or taking anyone out.
Until someone runs it over. See what I'm saying?
Right.
So.
Can we get a consensus to add the language that shall include the City of Northport?
Must, or, is it shall, yeah.
Yeah, we probably should just add that, for those three, because we're not gonna build anymore.
Maybe.
No.
No, but we may. You know what I mean? You never know. River Road, South. Never know.
Yeah, I guess you could put it on the.
So.
There's some being built and some not.
Yeah, I think it just all needs to be the same, that, that, yeah, the City of Northport will be on it.
When you enter into the city, it states the city's name.
On these monument signs.
Do you want to add that here, that you have, you want the ability to add another one? Would you say?
No, just add the language that is.
No, 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 I think, no, it's flipping. If you add one, I would think I would want them to match the other three that are out there.
Absolutely.
Yes. So, door swings both ways. We'll make sure, you know, we won't take it off, we don't intend to add one. But should you, you need to follow the same standard that is out there now. This way they're all cohesive, you know. Not that somebody comes up with a great new design and says, I want to change the one.
So.
Hard bargain, John.
So it would be that.
You drive a hard bargain, my friend.
They're, they're afraid ours will be better now, you know, I, I can understand that.
So basically what I'm hearing is.
Gateway Monument signs.
Guys, one at a time, please, one at a time.
Okay, so all Gateway Monument signs must include "City of Northport" and follow the design standards.
However they're gonna phrase it, of existing monument signs.
Well, at the time, though, you know, they may change those signs later on, and it's a different standard, I don't know.
How about we, we let them come up with the language? Basically what we're looking for here is that language would be added to the Gateway Monument sign section that's, in essence, going to say it shall include the City of Northport on the sign, and that the signs, the monument signs should match existing signs for cohesiveness.
I'm gonna go down to a question at the core like this. When we get to the.
We're gonna have to move you over there for the next part.
No, I'm a walker. When we get to the post-annexation agreement, we have been working with staff, particularly the chiefs, for the police station, police substation, and the fire station to be at Fredo and forty-one, the southwest corner. Now that's inside the gateway. And actually, we were talking about this yesterday, working on signage, monumentation for downtown. And the discussion was, obviously, we probably have some both intersections for the main entrance into downtown, and then wanting to tie West Villages and Fredo, West Villages Parkway and Fredo, into that theming. And we talked about in Fredo, putting something in the island, but having a sister monument. This wouldn't be a gateway, it's not intended to be a gateway. A sister monument that would look and feel similar, but in that case would be "City of Northport Police and Fire." Something like that to tie into our theming, but would prevent someone to put something ugly up that says "City of Northport." To me, that would not be a gateway sign, I just wanted to make sure.
It's not.
Yeah, I'll be ultimate designer, run past the chiefs, but, okay.
All right, so we have a consensus, Commissioner Amrich?
Yes.
Obviously Commissioner Carason, myself, yes, obviously Vice Mayor? Yes, okay, we have a consensus on that one.
That's it.
All right. So.
Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Carason had taken quite a few of my questions, and even questions based on the PowerPoint, some of them were answered during that discussion. I do have more. It is now eleven forty, we're getting close to lunchtime. We can continue working on it, I just don't want everybody's bellies growling, I don't know how long it's gonna take to go through it. I'm just giving everybody fair warning.
I don't want a break until this topic's done.
Okay, so we'll continue on? Is that your thought? Okay. Is that all right? I, just continue on, guys? Commissioner Amrich and Carason?
Yeah.
So, my first one is.
Oh, page?
On page one, and it's basically the history. I know that history is very important to Commissioner Carason. It was one of the main reasons that we said, hey, bring back more history and put history in this book. So I'm looking at it, and while I appreciate the new added history, when was it annexed? How many acres were initially annexed? What was the purpose of annexation? To me, that's part of historical reference, and that's not in here.
I read it.
That's page three, actually, the history and background.
Two thousand and four.
Right, it doesn't say, in two thousand and four it was annexed.
The City of Northport entered into a unique partnership with the private sector in two thousand and four through the adoption of the plant processing, the whole paradigm.
Okay, full.
Yeah, I think it was annexed in oh one, oh two.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you. That's what's missing. While we entered into this unique partnership, it wasn't, there's nothing mentioned about annexation.
For the most part, we took what was in the two thousand and six VDPB and just brought it forward, figuring it was good at that time, we weren't trying to change history.
No, I, I, I understand, but if we're going to have history, let's have history.
Okay, add annexation date.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I saw where it said at some point, it's two thousand and one, and then there was another section that gave.
Eight thousand acres.
Yeah, eight thousand acres was in there too, but it gave.
But it says.
Span.
It says the eight thousand acres of West Villages that was annexed into the city is identified on the index map, which we need to remove that next sentence in there. But it doesn't say when it was annexed. It doesn't say what was the initial acreage that was annexed. It, it's history.
Yeah.
Let's, let's talk about history. If history is going to be discussed, like Commissioner Carason mentioned on December fifth, let's mention history.
Yeah. Well, if we put that together, there's, it wasn't annexed in one piece, so there's.
I was gonna say, you might have to add to it.
It's gonna be a little work to put, put all that together, but we can put all that together.
That's what I'm, I'm saying. And, and maybe, you know, this part was annexed in two thousand and one, how many acres? And then in two thousand whatever, how many acres?
Or you just say between one and four X acres.
That's, that's what it was stating, I've still haven't found words there.
So can I get a consensus to revisit history and, and include history?
Yes.
Commissioner Amrich?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
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 Thank you. All right, so that's that one. On page five, it talks about, in the second line in, on page five, it talks about the West Villages partnership. Again, if we're talking history, who is the West Villages partnership? What is it?
Just multiple owners in partnership.
I saw that somewhere.
It says here, the vast majority of land that lies within West Villages under common ownership by the West Villages partnership.
Maybe if we add it in a little history about the ownership?
Get convoluted. You'll see from the joint there, there is.
Like ten of them.
Seven or ten different LLCs.
So, is the West Villages partnership, is it a legal entity?
Yes.
Okay.
West Villages LLP.
Okay, so let's put LLP after that. So that way then, it, if.
Change the word partnership to LLP.
Yeah. So we'll make it the legal entity name.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because I didn't know who they were. And if you're referring to them, it should be identified.
And just to give you an idea of who they are. It.
Oh, I know who, I, I.
There was three partners, now we're down to two.
Okay, so can we get a consensus to add the legal entity name instead of the West Villages partnership, whatever that may be? Consensus, Commissioner Amrich?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Those that matter to me.
Alrighty, and then on the same page, the last sentence in Village A, it says, "This approved development is recognized in a non-tracking, non-residential tracking table." What is a non-residential tracking table? What is that?
So that's, if you go back to the town center areas, we've asked them to track their land use mix on each plan that they submit to us, so that we know where they're at at all times. And so that's what that's referring to.
Is it the same thing as the tracking chart that is on page thirty-nine?
Yeah, we can probably just make that language a little more consistent.
Okay.
I like the idea of the word "tracking chart" versus "table," because it's more clear as to what your objective is.
All right, so, the tracking chart is de, is prepared by the master developer based on what is the language on page thirty-nine. Does the City of Northport ever review that for accuracy?
We'll be reviewing it with everyone that they submitted on.
Thank you. So do we need a consensus to change non-resident, residential tracking table to tracking chart for consistency?
Are you gonna make the change?
Okay, thank you, I just, I want to make sure, that's all.
Yep.
Skipping over to page forty-three. If you go to the third paragraph, it says, "The following conceptual site plan graphics offer conceptual examples, blah, blah, blah." Following means it's coming after that statement. But in this case, it's on the preceding page.
We'll fix the format.
And you might want to also cite then those figure numbers? You need a consensus to do that, ma'am?
Page forty-three, you're just looking to rephrase and clarify?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the formatting on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pictures on forty-two should be after the, basically forty-two and forty-three should flip flop, I wish you had cross-referenced.
So while you are looking at the formatting, and I talked to Ms. Nicole about this, there are many pages that reference figure number nine point two, figure number twelve point seven.
We already talked about that.
Those all need to be looked at and refigured, because they're not correct.
We'll go through and do a full.
Okay.
Katie's already started.
Formatting.
Fantastic.
References.
And, fantastic. Page forty-nine, I'm getting there, guys.
You're doing fine, doing fine.
On, it's, it's the second paragraph, "The following." On, it's the second paragraph, "The following uses shall be permitted in town center areas of West Villages and shall not require a special exception." Well, if it shall be permitted, why would you even have to mention a special exception?
Well, there's an answer to this.
I think it's just for clarification purposes, to make absolutely clear that it doesn't have to go through the special exception process, but it is totally clear it shall be permitted. Yeah, I think when talking over this over with a consultant, I think I came up with language, I'm trying to remember what it was, that kind of solved both concerns. I can't remember what it was now. The following uses shall be permitted without a special exception in town center areas, maybe something to that effect.
But if it's permitted? I, I'm going by our ULDC, if it's permitted, it's permitted, no questions, ifs, ands, or buts. There's no special exceptions if it's permitted.
I understand what you're saying. I... I think the intent was just to make sure it was abundantly clear.
Because we have some specific regulations currently, and until our ULDC code is changed, it really isn't clear. So I think this was just a CYA until those things get put in place. That's how I understood it.
I just, I just saw the redundancy, I will leave it alone. If staff is fine with it and everybody else, that's great. Okay, moving on to sixty-four. Now this is where it's going to get kind of page flippy over. All right, page sixty-four, we're gonna start there. It's the second paragraph, it says, "Landscape areas are four separate zones landscaping against major roads and parkways." What are, could, could you define what a major road and parkway is?
It's in our comp plan, right?
Okay, so since I'm getting kind of a silence and you're thinking, I'm gonna...
I'm trying to find where you're...
It's the second paragraph, first line.
Oh, I see.
Landscape areas are four separate zones landscaping against major roads and parkways. So now... The reason why I'm asking, what is the definition of a major road and a parkway? Is because if you go to pages twenty-two through twenty-nine, major roads and parkways is not a term that's used for the roads and stuff. They use the phrases Main Street, Boulevard, mixed use, Avenue. And each one of those have a different standard. So that's why it's kind of convoluted.
We could guess the easiest way in this page sixty-four, just to find which ones they're considering the major road. West Villages Parkway, Prado, Playmore, I guess, to a degree, and Man City Beach Road. It'd be only those four would be the major roads.
All right, so let's hop over to pages twenty-two.
Could we change that to collector and arterial roadways?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to be consistent with the terms we use throughout, and those are, they're identified as collector and arterials in the...
Thank you.
Definitely she's going.
Yeah.
So on page sixty-four, you would, and throughout, you would change the wording from major roads and parkways to collectors and arterials. Isn't there one more collector arterial and...
Local.
Yeah, we would want this, this would apply local.
Just wanted to meet.
Because there are many, excuse me, major roads and parkways is mentioned throughout this document, but when you go to the section that's titled roadways and pathways, how do you know which is which? And then...
We'll scrub that one.
Or if you want to leave that language, because it's a little nicer than collectors and arterials, we've always got a definition for major roads and parkways in the back, that says it's any collector or arterial.
Oh, I like that too.
In the definitions.
I kind of like that, because I like the sound, major roads and parkways for kind of the aesthetic of the book, but...
Right.
You got there, Katie?
I do, I just also wanted to note that on page sixty-seven, we do note that landscape requirements for major roadways and parkways as shown on the index.
I, I understand that.
But I think that a definition makes a lot of sense, and we can include that.
Okay.
So we'll get a consensus to have them add, collect, I'm sorry, have them add a definition for major roads and parkways?
Yes.
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 Consensus on that one. Okay, so when you go to pages twenty-two through twenty-nine, is a Main Street a arterial, is it a collector? Because it's not...
This is Katie, the purpose of having the menu list of roadway available is really for the, at the time of the Village District Pattern Plan, you can right-size your roadway cross-section to the community that you're trying to create. And so, I mean, I think that we could go through and identify each roadway type as a major or a minor roadway. But that's really something that should be evaluated at the time of VDPB. And it's part of that process.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I just, if we're using, certain roads are arterial, certain roads are collector, certain roads are Main Street, certain roads are boulevards, certain roads, how do you identify which one is which, is all I'm trying to get at, because it's kind of convoluted.
So you would utilize the index map, I mean, the index map shows the major roadways that John and Nicole noted, but in the pattern plans themselves, you have a roadway hierarchy map that shows what each roadway is and how it's classified.
Well, I appreciate you defining at least road, major roads and parkways, thank you for that. Going to page sixty-seven. And if you look at letter B, like boy, it says, "The frontage yard shall include two canopy trees, blah, 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 blah." But when you go to pages twenty-two through twenty-nine, let me get to it. It says here, "May provide public frontages with plantings containing trees." So again, we have differing language. Shall is absolute, you shall do this. But in pages the twenty-two through twenty-nine, it's saying, eh, if you want to, eh, if you don't.
Yeah, but that's because of the Main Streets, right?
The cross-section is saying that that cross-section may provide a public frontage. The language on sixty-seven is saying, when that public frontage is provided, it has to include this specification of landscaping.
So what's the definition of a public frontage?
That is, um, that would be the...
I'm sorry?
I think in the cross-sections, just delete that line that says, "May provide public frontages with planting." Just take it out of the cross-sections.
The public frontage is outlined in that area, underneath in the table, so it says a public frontage and it has minimum and maximums. So it shows the planting width as being, having the potential to be a zero. And there's flexibility in there, zero to six feet.
But if you have, on this page sixty-seven, it shall include, and here you're having a zero or a may...
Again, it's when that, if it's at the six feet and it's included, then it has to be planted to those standards. If it's at the zero, then it obviously doesn't have to be planted to the standards.
In other words, they're referencing two different instances in each section.
The cross-section's saying it may or may not have this section, and the sixty-seven is saying, when it has this section, this is what that section has to look like.
So, I think what the difference is, is the two little words. On page sixty-seven, it says, "Frontage yard shall." But if you're going to twenty-two and through twenty-nine, it says, "Public frontage." Maybe that's what the... I don't want to take up time here. If, if you guys could look at that, and if, if it's okay, maybe I can chat with you about it.
Okay.
After?
Absolutely.
Because it, I'm trying to get the may that's in the pages twenty-two through twenty-nine to be a shall. Because shall is what is on sixty-seven.
The one issue with that is on each of those pages, there's a minimum, maximum.
They're design dependent.
So they could vary in the cross-section. And just look at twenty-two, which is Main Street, which, to say it's one of our streets in our downtown, you know, you could see how there's trees planted in grates. There's no, you know, you wouldn't have the same type of landscaping as you would have in a boulevard going down West Villages Parkway, because you'll have a commercial shop or a restaurant right behind it. And that's why there's, you're working with a shall over here, and this could be this, it could be this.
Frontage? It says, "You shall have these plantings." And I'm seeing the word frontage on page twenty-two through twenty-nine.
I think we should take the shall out somehow.
Well, no, we gotta, we gotta have the protection. So if we could get a consensus that I can talk to you about this, and you guys look at this a little bit differently based on what I'm saying with these frontage yards.
Explain it, because I get...
There's different languages being used, and I want to make sure that the protections are there.
Okay.
That's all. So...
You don't need a consensus for that, you have every right to do that.
So thank you for hearing me out on that. On the tree and plant list, did our city arborist look this over and approve it?
Yeah.
Yes?
I would be able to confirm that.
Thank you. All right, in the staff report, it says that the VDPB, that there shall be a thirty-five percent canopy will be in a, on a village by village basis. Where is that in this book? Because I cannot find it.
Katie, you got that one?
I am looking as we speak.
I just want to make sure it's in there, because it was very much discussed throughout a lot of our meetings that the canopy is going to be on a village by village.
It's on page sixty-five, under Tree Canopy Development Standards.
Sixty-five?
Second sentence.
Tree canopy, the City of Northport. Shall be, okay, fantastic, thank you very much, appreciate that. Brush that off. All right. On the ordinance itself, and all these pages, I'm so sorry. The ordinance itself, and line twenty-three, we're talking about the index map, identifying the boundaries, future park locations, and the various amended index maps. It has different dates. But the one date that's not on there is the most, most recent one, which was July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. That was the last time we approved an index map.
Okay.
And that's not in this ordinance.
That may not have been done when we first drafted this, so we'll add that in.
Word help us.
Okay, so reference...
Government moves slow.
Last date on ordinance, correct?
So can I get a consensus to add July twenty-third somewhere on line twenty-three?
Yes.
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 Thank you. The reason why I'm getting all these consensuses is so that we can just, in the final motion. All right, this next one?
I like that.
Line thirty-four through thirty-eight, or thirty-nine. It says here that, "On November seventh, the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board held a properly noticed public hearing to receive public comment in the adoption of this ordinance, and whereas during that meeting, it was recommended to approve ordinance number twenty nineteen forty-six." The Planning and Zoning Advisory Board did not, during that meeting, approve ordinance number twenty nineteen forty-six. They approved VBA number twenty-nine, I'm sorry, they approved VBA number nineteen zero six five. There is a huge difference between a VBA number and an ordinance. And I, I want to make sure, can we say that in this ordinance when it didn't happen the way the language is written?
I think we better have City Attorney look into that.
Did they not see the ordinance at the end?
Yes, they did, the ordinance was in their back of material, and it was on the staff report.
I understand it wasn't identified by ordinance number on the agenda.
Their motion was to approve VBA number. It was not to approve ordinance number. That's where the semantics may come into play, and I just want to make sure that this is okay. The Planning and Zoning Advisory Board approved VBA number nineteen zero six five.
Yes, Mayor, but the entire ordinance is the approval of that document. The only active thing in the ordinance is the adoption of Exhibit A, which is the West Villages Village District Pattern Book.
So the question is...
I do not believe is the correct name of it, Nicole.
The question is, because they verbally stated they were going to approve one thing, while the agenda and the, and the intent of that meeting was to approve the ordinance, it really doesn't matter what they stated.
I think it's a distinction without a difference, if you'd like to change maybe the ordinance, I don't think that it's critical.
I just, I want to make sure that we're not going to have unintended problems later on if somebody questions this on the process. Because the VBA is not referenced in the public notice. The VBA is not referenced in this ordinance before us. And I understand staff report has all of these cross-checks and balances. Public notice does not, the ordinance does not.
The VBA number is referenced in the public notice. We always put that in there.
Must be really, really tiny.
It's in the information saying that the files pertinent to ordinance twenty nineteen forty-six, comma, VBA nineteen oh six five may be inspected by the public at the Neighborhood Services Department.
That's where the real teen-time print is. Working on trying to get...
It's all teen.
Exactly.
I don't see any problem with adding the VBA number to the whereas clauses if that would make...
I think that would probably be the best way to do it, to just cover ourselves in case, I like that idea. I don't know what the language would be, and I would leave that up to you.
But I do want to say on the record, Mayor, pursuant to your questions prior to this meeting, that we have reviewed the PZAB agenda and the notices, and I don't see a legal issue there. While the agenda did not have the typical language of the full block, it did put the notice, the public clearly on notice that the subject of that item was the West Villages Pattern Book.
Fantastic, and I, when I see that the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board unanimously recommended that the City Commission approve ordinance number twenty nineteen forty-six, that was not what was in their motion. And that's what I wanted to get clarification of. So I like the idea of adding a new whereas clause, or changing that, or something to include the VBA in this ordinance.
I don't see a problem with that.
I'm good with referencing the VBA in the whereas clause.
No problem.
No problem.
But I don't want it to leave out the ordinance either.
No, no, just to, in addition, reference the VBA.
Can I get a consensus? I have three, Commissioner Emrich and Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you. Right, so... So, going back to the PZAB meeting, the West Villages Pattern Book presented to PZAB. And it was, it was presented to PZAB, the staff reports, and included in the December fifth commission meetings. The pattern book. All of these were the same, but the pattern book that we just went through is different. Four of the changes you guys already mentioned, we went through some additional changes that weren't even in here. I, I am concerned with the two different books. And I'm wondering who made the changes between when PZAB heard it and what is presented to us today? Because, like I said, the PZAB meeting, the December fifth meeting, and the staff report all have the same document. But this document is even different. So who?
It's been a combination based on a variety of factors. So as Don mentioned, they hired a landscape architect who had a lot of input on how the document should be worded. We recently had a conversation with commission about alcoholic uses and how to handle those. And so staff recommended that change. When this was first brought in December, there was some conversation of history and background. So that implemented the changes there. So it was kind of a variety of things that led that. Planning Board did have the opportunity to, you know, hear the document and weigh in and recommend any changes they would like to see one way or the other. So I don't believe we have an issue there. But that's kind of the history of where we're.
Planning and Zoning Advisory Board weighed in on this document. They didn't get a chance to hear a lot of the changes that were made that we are seeing for the first time. Not, not even talking about the ones we discussed. I'm talking about within the document. I, I just want to make sure that that is okay. Because the considerable changes between PZAB and now.
That, that's a question for City Attorney. We're okay legally that there was a different document?
Yes, Mayor, we've addressed this question as well. This is a, a very common practice among the board that the document changes from the time that PZAB sees it until its final adoption. The only difference here is that some of the changes made between the first time you saw this document in December and today were initiated by staff and the applicant as opposed to by the board. But the first time the document did come before the board in December, it was, in my understanding, it was the same document that the advisory board saw. Regardless, the advisory board has had an opportunity in full to address the topic of what appeared in the book before them, what didn't appear in the book before them, anything else that they would like to see or other concerns or ideas they may have had.
I, I was just.
Thank you.
Concerned about the changes that were made by staff and applicant and staff before even coming to us, making sure that they can see it. A couple of the changes that were made were removing language. And I'd like to kind of go over some of those to see what the reasoning was for removing the language. On page sixty-six of this document that we're, we have before us today was, sorry. There were some lines that were removed that addressed a minimum of two-inch caliper plantings. That part was removed and I'm wondering why? Because I would think you would want to have a minimum of the two-inch calipers versus planting something that is like a matchstick.
This, by removing that standard, it goes back to what the code minimum is. And is, that's a three-inch caliper. So you're actually increasing by removing it.
Does it say that it reverts back to the ULDC? If, if it's not being mentioned. Okay.
On page sixty-four, what we, what we did was we moved that requirement from where it was previously shown to the Landscape and Irrigation Standards intro. And we established that as a requirement.
Three-inch minimum.
And we, and we said three-inch caliper rather than two-inch caliper. And so it's on page sixty-four, four paragraph stamp.
One, two, three, four. Thank you. And this was part of the language that was added after PZAB sought, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that being addressed. I appreciate that. The other one is... On page seventy-eight, there is a fixture height. Right now it has A and B. But in the original PZAB document, it had A, B, and C. And letter B in the original PZAB document was removed. And I'm wondering if maybe it should have said between fifty feet and a hundred feet height of this lighting fixture. Because currently, the way it's written, it says within a hundred feet of any property. Whereas the first one is between fifty feet. I'm, I'm just.
Katie, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, and I'm, I'm looking at, I'm trying to find the old language so I can compare and contrast, but.
Page seventy-one in the old book.
Thank you.
Page seventy-one, yeah, I was just going to tell you. It's page seventy-eight in the new book and page seventy-one in the PZAB book.
So, I mean, as we went back and looked at these fixture height requirements and the, you know, course the, is to minimize off-site illumination spill or lighting protected areas, which are residential uses in roadways. We, we saw that the standards that we had established looked to potentially be too restrictive. And so we wanted to pull back on those restrictions. And ensure that there were protections in place for properties that had lighting protected zones. But also.
And she's gone.
Well, hold on. I'm, I'm, and I'm, I'm sorry, I had to stop and read. As we looked at it, we, we determined that the thirty-five foot height limitation appeared to be appropriate. And so that, that's what we are presenting to you for consideration.
But thirty-five height is for all other light fixtures and that's now the new B. And that was existing in the PZAB document as letter C. I'm wondering why in the PZAB document did B get removed?
Well, it really didn't. What they did was they combined A and B.
Consolidated.
Right?
I...
Or is it that A and B is kind of, in the old document, is kind of the same? You just.
Yeah, rather than, rather than having three, three standards, we increased the maximum height for fixtures within fifty feet to twenty feet max. And then all others, antics need thirty-five feet. And so in, in making that adjustment, we were able to eliminate B.
So if, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I just want to make sure that, so in this new document, you just combined letter A and letter B and compromised and, and. Okay, I just want to make sure. So thank you for that. And I believe that... Means I am completely finished. Is there anybody else that has any questions either with the ordinance itself or the pattern book before we get a motion? Nope. Nothing. Does somebody want to do a motion or would you like me to? Oh, wait, 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 wait. Hold up, hold up. I just felt a baseball be thrown at me figuratively. Go ahead, City Manager.
When do you want to do the public comment on this item?
Ah, thank you very much. Good job. Thank you. So at this time, like before we do a motion, let's get a public comment, City Manager.
All right, this was the first public comment we received under the new system. So unfortunately, the individual's name is not on there. They put name as the name of the item instead. We clarified after this one came in. But, so their comment is, "Before this is adopted, the future land should be set aside for educational facility needs to be addressed. Inevitably, the addition of future developments, particularly the number of homes and layout of planned development, needs to adequately include multiple areas to be set aside for future schools, parks, and public spaces. Coordination with planning partners, Sarasota County Public Schools should be included as future needs should be addressed at this time rather than later. Please ensure the future growth needs of such vital infrastructure is addressed."
Thank you for the public comment. I, do you want to address that, Ms. Nicole?
School concurrency is managed, you know, on a consistent basis throughout the city. The school board has identified property within this area for the expansion of school services. They are also kept in the loop for every residential plat that comes in so they know how to track the growth in this area.
And we do have land set aside for parks and stuff like that? Thank you. All right, is there any other public comments?
Not that I have.
Vice Mayor, do you have any? Okay, fantastic. I'm not sure whose light is on for making a motion, so just go ahead and please do it.
Move to continue ordinance number twenty nineteen dash forty-six for second reading when can be arranged in proper notification, including all of the consensus taken during the discussion.
Second.
Motion on the floor to continue ordinance number twenty nineteen forty-six to second reading at a future date, including all of the consensuses that were given.
Ask a question as far as procedure, does, don't you?
And that was made by Vice Mayor and seconded by Commissioner Karason. Go ahead, please.
Sorry, but don't you have to have a date? Or date to be determined is okay for the second reading?
A date for se, a date to be determined is fine. You just have to notice it.
I, we've had conflicting information about that, so I just wanted to make sure.
All right, anything to that motion, Vice Mayor?
Nope, I think it's been discussed enough.
Anything to that, Commissioner Karason?
Heck, no, I think we didn't. Great, thank you guys so much for.
This was a lot of stuff we had to go through. So thank you very much. At this time, we will go ahead and take the vote on motion. And that passed four to zero with Commissioner Emrich absent. At this time, let's take a lunch break until one o'clock and reconvene. And then we'll finish up with everything else.
Thank you guys again.
Thank you again. Thank you again. (inaudible)
Welcome back, everybody. Hope you all enjoyed your lunch. Let's get back right on it. We are now into the Resolution 2020 R-07, and that is to accept the transfer of ownership for the wastewater plant. City Clerk, could you please read that by title only?
Resolution number 2020-R-07, a resolution of the City of Northport, Florida, authorizing the City Commission to accept the transfer of ownership via special deed to accept the transfer of ownership to personal property related to the wastewater treatment plant via a bill of sale, authorizing the mayor to execute the acknowledgment of acquisition of certain infrastructure improvements and acknowledgment of assignment of warranties between the city, WVID, and Gamy Companies, Inc. Authorizing the mayor to execute the acknowledgment of acquisition of certain infrastructure improvements and acknowledgment of assignment of warranties between the city, WVID, and Young Quest Brothers, Inc., providing for filing of documents, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. If you remember, back in September of last year, we entered into an updated utilities agreement with the West Villages and developers and everybody else that is listed on this. Part of that agreement is that they will build a wastewater treatment plant. They'll also now are getting into the early stages of a water treatment plant as well, but they have built that wastewater treatment plant. Their agreement requires them to turn it over to us, and they are being reimbursed by capacity fees as those come in. You all may remember that agreement from back in September. This wastewater treatment plant is now complete, ready to be turned over to us, and that's what this resolution is doing, is turning that property over to the City of Northport.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And more.
And there are also two agreements there that you'll be approving whereby the district is transferring warranty rights to the city.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, please, Ms. Mayor.
I saw that there was going to be no more impact fees gathered, so I'm wondering how much the construction was total for that plant. I'm trying to compare it, you know, how much it cost to how much was collected, if we're not going to be collecting anymore.
See if I can find the cost.
I think we have a helper.
Since he built the plant, he might actually know the number better than I do.
I don't have the final count.
In for the record.
John Lozinski, Senior VP for West Villages LLP.
Thank you, John.
The final cost for that plant, plus or minus $38 to $40 million. I don't have the final counting with me, but to give you an order of magnitude.
That's what, that's all I was curious of, was round number. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Commissioner Hanks, did you have any questions?
I have a couple. City Manager, when do we, when does the Utilities Department collect wastewater fee, capacity fees?
I believe they're collected at the CO, just like regular building permits.
At CO?
I believe so.
Thank you.
I hear affirmative from the back of the room.
That would be a yes, then.
Okay. And a head nod confirmed that by our Director of Utilities. Thank you. So, I'm, I'm, in the legislative text, it says that utilities will no longer be collecting wastewater capacity fees. So if CO hasn't been issued, houses in, almost done being built, and they're going to close on it next month. If we accept the wastewater treatment plant today, who do those capacity fees go to?
To the district.
To the West Villages Improvement District. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So now I have to go a little bit further down into the document in the legislative text, and it says that the Utility Department will continue to make additional payments, roughly $2.5 million, give or take, over the next few years. And that it further states that the CIPs will be updated based on the actuels collected and available. So if we have to make a payment, over the payments, plural, over the next few years, and we're not collecting any more capacity fees, where is this $2.5 million going to come from?
That will come from new users that sign up that are not in the West Villages. Will still collect capacity fees from other parts of the city as they collect or connect to our system, because what we owe the West Villages, that $2.5 million, is money that we collected up there and have been able to use to make improvements to our current system or to expand capacity in our current system or other utilities-related expansions. So now those expansions are no longer being used by the West Villages, so they're freed up for new, non-West Villages customers. So as those customers connect to the already existing system, those capacity fees will be able to reimburse what we've used of West Villages' capacity fees for the current system. I can try to explain that a different way.
No, I, I understand it. I'm trying to formulate a question. So new users outside of the West Villages area is going to be paying this $2.5 million.
Correct.
And it's only on wastewater capacity, correct?
Correct.
So all of the water capacity fees, regardless if it's collected in West Villages or outside of the West Villages, stays in the Utility Department?
For now.
For now.
When they turn over a water plant, this same situation will happen up there as well, and we track them separately as to where they're collected.
But don't we have projects, wastewater projects, that are dependent on new user capacity fees to be able to fulfill?
We have some, yes, but we have an agreement that also states that the West Villages will be reimbursed, will be paid all of the capacity fees that are collected in the West Villages. So we've used some of those capacity fees on the current system, because when those users connected, they were using the current system. Now somebody else will step in their shoes, so they'll pay for what that person had already designed to use. So their money, we can't double-collect for the same capacity item.
But we wouldn't have had to increase capacity if it wasn't for the West Villages, and that's why we collected those capacity fees?
That is correct, but we also now have that capacity, and if we hadn't increased it, we wouldn't be able to connect these other new customers that want to connect.
Okay. Chicken and egg, and egg and chicken.
Yep.
Gotcha. All right.
Do you have someone standing?
No, I was just going to chime in, but Mr. Leir said that is exactly correct. Projects that we have out there in our CIP, this would be money that would be not used in our CIP projects, that's already set aside. This would be the available money that's left that would be paid back.
Okay. So if we collect in excess over these next few years, let's say we collect $3.5 million in capacity, wastewater capacity, do we have to give West Villages $3.5 million?
Only give them what was collected in the West Villages.
Only in the West Villages? Until, when is that definitive stop?
Until we've paid everything back to them that was collected up there. The money that they're collecting up there is from the plant that's up there, so they're going to collect to get their $38 to $40 million back, which will cover the cost of that plant. And if they need more capacity in that plant, they'll build that as well.
So if there's 100 homes that are being, that are already permitted, already starting construction process, when CO comes, those capacity fees get paid to the West Villages?
Correct, and they'll collect, connect to that.
New plant.
Plant up there.
Okay. What I'm looking for now is, when do our users outside of the West Villages stop paying the West Villages' monies?
When we have paid them back, I believe it's approximately $11.5 million, of which we have about, almost nine, right now.
So the stop point is that approximate $11.5 million. Anything above and beyond that then stays here with the City of Northport?
Correct.
I wanted to make sure we weren't paying back $38 million.
Nope. They're going to get, the rest of that money is going to come from connections as they happen in the West Villages.
Okay.
And may not be paid back.
And that's, that's the other thing, is you'll notice on this agreement, as well as on the next one, is one of the major risks is that they won't get paid back, 100 percent. You know, there's, like, what I mentioned, there's $38 to $40 million to build this plant. If they don't collect that much money, it's on them. It's not on the ratepayers of Northport, taxpayers for the rest of Northport. It's, the risk of loss is on them.
So would they, they, meaning West Villages, be able to expand into unincorporated Sarasota County and give wastewater or water to unincorporated Sarasota County?
That...
If there's capacity?
Yeah.
What we own today, south of the city line, most of that property but for one section, or roughly 640 acres, is in the Inglewood Water District. The 640 acres, which is generally just east of Myacabe Pine's golf course, is not in the City of Northport, nor is it in the Inglewood Water District. When we get to that point, we'll have to figure out who can best service that area. And if that's the case, you know, if it makes more sense to come to Northport, we'll come to Northport. Assistant City Manager, Yarborough's already said he wants to be able to service that for the revenues down the road, but that's a 10 to 20-plus-year issue out.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. My final question on this is, in Section 3.01 in the resolution, it talks about filing of documents. Okay? Fantastic. But who is paying the recording fees and transfer fees and all of those kind of fees associated with recording those documents? Because last time I checked, they don't do that free.
I presume we're paying the document fees, because we've paid for all the other expenses. Unless you want, I would be happy to let the city pay for it.
So, since you're presuming, and I'm sure the city is presuming the same, is it possible to put it definitively in the resolution, who is paying the recording and transfer fees to remove all doubt?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. I don't know what that language would look like or anything, so...
It's fine. We can add that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions?
Ready for a motion?
Saying none, I will go ahead and entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2020-R-07 as presented, but adding the change that was just stated of the transfer in title fees being paid by the district.
Motion on the floor by Vice Mayor approving Resolution 2020-R-07 as presented, adding into Section 3.01 the language necessary for the district to pay all recording and transfer fees. That was by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Amrich. Anything to that, Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Amrich?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and I see no other lights on, so we'll go ahead and take the vote. And that passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
Operation, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. Moving on to general business, approve the West Villages developer agreement, or post-annexation agreement. City Manager, oh.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This, this is one of those documents that has been a long time in the making, those that have been around for an extremely long amount of time.
He's talking about you, Vanessa.
Who likes to remind us of it, knows that the city entered into a principles agreement quite some time ago, back in 2006. The plan always was to enter into a post-annexation agreement. This document that you have in front of you is designed to accomplish that goal. It has not been being worked on for the last 14 years. It has been being worked on, I would say, for the last two to three years, with a significant amount of work being done by, on both the district, the developer, the staff, the City Attorney's Office, everybody here, put a tremendous amount of work into getting this document that you have in front of you. This document has a lot of provisions, a lot of teeth in it for both parties that did not exist in the previous, it was just slightly bigger than a NAPAN agreement for the original one. It accomplished the goals, but it didn't have any great triggers in it for when certain things had to be done. I myself would like to, would certainly like to thank everybody that was involved in creating this document. I know we're not quite to the finish line, we're really close. I'm sure you all have a bunch of questions. One of the things that, you know, I just mentioned on the last agreement that definitely applies to multiple provisions of this is reimbursements that are in this agreement. You'll, there is a comparison of the old agreement to this one, and some of the things you'll notice is the developer or district get reimbursed through impact fees as they're collected. Obviously, we've collected some of them with all the homes that have been built up there, but I'll just use as the example, because it's probably the biggest numbers in there, is the fire department. Those fire impact fees will reimburse for the building of at least two and possibly more fire stations that are built up there. Based on the current costs of fire stations and the current impact fee rates, the developer will have a loss. They will not get reimbursed for everything that they're going to spend. I just, I say that because I want to make sure that everybody knows that. It's not only in that area that that applies. That's just probably the biggest number and the biggest example in there. So there is a lot of give and take on both parties' sides. I, I think what you have in front of you is an agreement that all should be happy we got to, that has a lot of, really what I would call a win-win document. I think the developer has some protections in there. I think we have them in there, without a doubt. Like I said, I know that there will be questions. I know some people will have some concerns on it, and we are here to address those. But at the end of the day, this is a very large agreement that I think will survive all of us here, and the city will be living with for the next 20-plus years as development goes up there. And as was stated earlier this morning by John, was that, you know, this is a document that we will, this and all the previous ones, these are documents that as one party wins, so does the other. It is a relationship that we're developing. This document puts into a formal state some of those relationship issues, but it, as the developer and the West Villages develops, so does the City of Northport. I think everybody in here is very clear that they are in Northport, they are Northport, they are a portion of our city. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you all, if you have any questions, if you'd like. We could go through the comparison document, if you'd like us to. If not, I think that we've met with almost all of you one-on-one to go over the documents, and we can open up for questions.
So, Commissioner, do you want to go through the comparison document, or do you want to just jump right in with questions?
I say jump right in, because we've...
We had an opportunity to review the comparison document, so, okay, so let's jump in with questions. Commissioner Luke, Vice Mayor Luke, I apologize.
Really, the only section that jumped out at me, and I would like to hear some explanation over, is on page 11 and 12, when it deals with parks and recreation, and it's discussing that 63-acre park. It is involved in, what do they call it? It's bound to be a park. I mean, our city attorney gave us that legal review a couple years ago when we had a discussion about it in a joint meeting, and it, it was protected to be that, but it looks like somehow you're releasing it from that and turning the 63 acres back over to the city to do what they want to with it. Is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Covenant. It was under a covenant, and this looks like it's going to be breaking the covenant and telling the city they can do what they want to.
To a degree, that is correct, but what we're doing is, as part of the additional park obligation, the 15-acre governmental site, and the potential for Fire Station Three, we added all those acres together and have attached it to the south end of the 63 acres. So the 63 acres becomes now part of a bigger 137-acre parcel that the city someday may, you're going to get the other 74, so the two get, will add together to get that piece. This is just intended for the city to have the ability to plan for that 137 acres as you see fit. We don't know if the fire station, if a third fire station will ever be needed, but this way it could be on the 63 acres, or it can be on the 74 acres. It's intended to be city use, and that whole complex would be designed with the city to work in any fashion that you see best.
To clarify, when the developer's talking about the additional parcel of land, he's referring to what the agreement calls combined-use land. The combined-use land is adjacent to the 63-acre park.
Okay.
And that amount was, what, 74 acres, you said?
Yeah, I believe it's...
On top of the 63, and they are joined?
Yes.
Okay. So by talking about removing the, oh, I just drew a blank to it, the covenant that was put upon the 63 acres, I'm a little concerned about that. That's 8,000 acres, and we were talking about making sure that we had commercial and all of this kind of stuff, but that's 8,000 acres, and they deserve as much parkland and parks and recreation those citizens do of anybody else within the city. So I would hate to see the 63 acres, and not that I'm against the fire department, but I would hate to see the 63 acres be turned into a fire station, when they need to be able to utilize parks and rec also. Jason?
Jason, Yarborough Assistant City Manager. The developer, that wasn't the developer's idea, by the way. That was staff's idea. The vision is, is to have a large park, maybe even one bigger than 63 acres. We've had some preliminary conversations with the county about possibly doing a regional park that may be possibly getting the county to hopefully take over some of the cost of either building or, or building and maintaining. Those are just preliminary. There's a real gross conversations. There's nothing definitive, there's nothing riding. So, but regardless, per the fire chief, and if we do a third fire station, we want that on River Road as far north as possible. So, and that came out of the fire study. So the idea being is that, is to take off the, the covenant and deed restrictions. You can still do it through zoning. You can tie it up through various things. At the end of the day, you're not going to be able to tie up the hands of future commissions. So, you know, but you, there are ways that you can handle that. But the vision is not to reduce park amen. Actually, the real vision is, is to do even a much larger park than the 63 acres. And if we don't ever need that fire station, that, that will be available to be parkland. But, but the staff's idea was, let's take off the covenants and deed restrictions so that we can position that fire station on River Road if we have need for it as far north as possible. So that's the vision, and that was the concept, not to reduce parkland, but actually to try to create a large, much larger parcel.
Try to create a larger park for the county.
Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully 100 acres or larger.
Exhibit E shows the relationship of the two par sites, the existing 63 and the additional property, and it's not part of this, but we provide a staff, we've already done an internal trail map, and we're tying all our future plan trails to this piece as well as downtown and other parcels within the villages. This way, everything can tie together. So we're planning on this being a significant park.
All right. I love the idea of covenant, because covenant protected it. And so, as you stated, we can't do anything about future commissions. This commission up here might feel as though park and rec is as well-deserved in that portion of our city as it is in every other portion of our city. And the next commission come along and say, hey, that's free and clear. We can put thus and such in, or we can put this other in, and they take away the park and rec aspect of that portion of our city, where I see a value to it. And I know that covenant was the only thing that was protecting it a couple years ago, when we had the discussions of doing something different with it. That is why I'm bringing it forward, because to me, removing the covenant makes it free-for-all for whoever's in charge and what they want to do with it. And I certainly don't want their quality of life diminished out there, as I wouldn't want it diminished anywhere else in the city.
So for the record, Nicole Gialhaus, Planning Division Manager, these lands will be coming back to you all as a plat for approval, and at that time, you could put the... and at that time, you could put the dedication to the public on the plat for those properties as an option.
I'm sorry, the 63 acres is already deeded to us. So you're saying that in Exhibit E, that parcel is coming back to us?
It would become, coming back as a plat, most likely combined in a replat with this 63 acre as one parcel.
If you don't mind, Vice Mayor Matt?
Go ahead, take over.
So if we keep the covenant on that 63 acres, if, if, because this is what we're, Vice Mayor is discussing. If we keep the covenant on that 63 acres, how can you replat it to include the combined-use plat in Exhibit E?
If you keep that on there, that will apply to that 63-acre portion regardless of what you do with it. I'm saying as an alternative, if you leave it the way the language is here to remove that restriction, you can put a new dedication that that property goes to the pub, for public use during the plating process.
You had Assistant City Attorney come up also?
City Attorney, did you want to speak to it or Assistant City Attorney? Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
So from staff's perspective, we hear what you're saying. I think there's a way to get that at the same time, possibly push the fire station carve-out further north, but do it at the time of replat. Now, you've kind of locked it up, but just obviously that's your call.
And you, you bring up a point, and I know West Village is not all Northport. There is one-third of it that is in the county. But if you look at the ratio of three fire stations in the Northport area, you'd have to have 21 stations in the rest of the Northport to cover the density that is in the rest. I mean, that's why I look at two and I see two as being reasonable, you know, with the build-out. The third, to me, is an overkill. So when I see, yes, sir, otherwise 21 stations are all over the city. When you, when you look at the density and everything. So, yeah, you opened that can of worms with me.
We collectively had a fire study done and we believe today is...
Would you please?
Smite over.
Sorry, guys.
We'll turn it over to the pro in a second. The belief is, you probably don't need a third fire station, question mark. There is a part of our holding, actually, it's on the Mayack and Pines Golf Course. There is a parcel already designated for future fire station down there. That's why we've talked about, once we get past this agreement, to start working with the county because we're working on our critical area plan process down there to work with the county fire chief, Chief Titus, to start doing some of that long-range planning. But that's also part of, what's really not clear in the document is that first fire station is being oversized to be a cohabitated fire station so the city of Northport and the county can continue the relationship that currently exists and provide multiple teams to service West Village's residents from the new fire station. But the chief wanted to be cautious till we knew exactly what the county was going to do for the other properties. So we agreed to build in the flexibility, give you the land and we'll study five, 10 years out if a third fire station is ever needed. So you have the land and if it's not needed, you can use it for park, general government purposes. But if that new study says we need one, collectively, we will do the work.
Scott Titus, Fire Chief for the Fire Rescue District. You made Mr. John really happy when you said that. But I'm going to tell you that so as, as that area develops, there, there are a whole lot of factors that go into determination of a fire station. And you are correct, it does involve density. It also revolves roadwork, network, your commercial, your residential, how that build-out is, the layout of the city. There's a lot of things that go into that. And although I stated a Holiday Inn Express, it is not my area of expertise. But fortunately, we had an independent company do an evaluation that kind of came on the heels of. They had done a study for Sarasota County as well. They did a study for us independently, which we selected them. And they looked at what is the potential future growth. And if you remember, we talked before about this ESCI study and it's referenced in here. And for the easiest concept in that particular area, what they said was the easiest way to describe it so that the layperson that's listening today over, you know, over the airways or whatever on the internet was for approximately every 5,000 residential rooftops, it's about what you would need a fire station for. So that's why we were at that trigger point. If you think about, I know you can look at that, Mayor, but I, I promise you, there's a lot of more science behind it, but it's the easiest way to explain it in that particular area. So when we look at what the build-out is, the current build-out, the projected build-out for the West Villages area, there's the city of Northport and as you said, there's unincorporated Sarasota County around that. To the south, just across the southern part of the city line, it gets into unincorporated Sarasota County for EMS coverage and it gets into Englewood Fire District for fire coverage. What we want to ensure for our community and our citizens is that as that area develops, they've already announced along that roadway, there are 10,500 homes going in south of the city. If we don't prepare for that and have the conversation. So right now, when we developed this agreement, we said, what we don't want to have happen is all those homes come in and because of mutual aid agreements and everything else, we start getting a lot of calls there. Our city units get pulled out of the area more often and now we're not providing coverage to what their primary resource should be. We would be supplementing basically service for another entity. It's a number of years down the road, depending on how fast the growth rate. Obviously, there's a lot of things changing in the economy right now. We don't know how that is going to impact things. But we do know at some point in time, there's a target date out there and we've projected it. It's agreed in the agreement at a certain number of households. We'll go out and do another study that says, how is that going to be impacted for our services? How's that going to impact Englewood Fire District? How's it going to impact Sarasota County, unincorporated Sarasota County? It might say that the city of Northport doesn't need a third station, but that Englewood does and Sarasota County does. Well, we have a piece of property dedicated. It gives us the opportunity to say, if we can do another collaborative agreement, maybe that piece of property that's on the golf course in Englewood, they could do a collaborative agreement. But what we want to ensure is that our resources aren't going to be overly extended going to run those future calls. I am very confident with the expertise that I do have that a station will be needed in that region. Whether it says the city of Northport on it or Sarasota County on it or Englewood on it, I don't know at this time. It's too early to tell, but I, I felt like it would be irresponsible for us to not plan for that. I have met with the Sarasota County Fire Chief, I have met with the Englewood Fire Chief together, all three of us, to talk about that down the road. It's not on their radar. They're working on that now. They are working with West Villages, as you said, on their cap project. And I'm not sure whether that'll pan out. But when the ESCI study came out, as well as telling us for a number of households and what stations may be needed in the future, it also looked at what the provided future network of road coverage was, what those response times would be and it gave suggested station locations, if there was one station, if there was two stations or if there was potentially three stations. When it looked at the difference between two stations and three stations, that recommended location for that third station was along the River Road corridor. The reason we have requested for us to stretch that property and remove those covenants is because if it did end up being in the city, to be a little bit further along on that property, it would be best location. And we thought it was better to go ahead and talk about that now and make those provisions now than it would be in the future. So I don't know if that helps or answers your question. I know that's a lot of information. I tried to condense it, but there's, there's a lot to it.
I noticed there was a lot of material in it and I went over it as thoroughly as I could. Your last sentence is what made more sense. You're wanting to potentially utilize some of the acreage of that 63 acres for the potential use, MOU or whatever. So that gives me more of an understanding of why you're wanting a larger area so you can configure things into that area. And then as Nicole was stating, we could give the use for at least 63 of those acres when it's reconfigured to be for park and rec.
And for clarification, just so that if there were to be a third station location there, we would anticipate that the acreage requirement would be very similar to what we're doing now with these other stations, four acres, four to five acres. So if, if you were interpreting that it was going to be much bigger than that and that's why it's not, yes. It would be primary parkland as well still. It would just be, at the edge of it, there may be a potential fire station there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is, this is totally different. How many fire stations do you think you're going to need in Northport proper?
Please don't quote me on this, but I do believe it is, when you look at our master plan for what our potential build-out, at full build-out...
267,000 people and there are only 30,000 of it.
I, I understand that, but a lot of that goes into, so there's different things here when you come into city proper than there as far as you can't get here from there. Some of that restricts some of our access and some of our distance of travel. But I believe, and forgive me for saying city, because I've been here for so long, I try and differentiate that when I say city proper. So old city versus what we've taken home with West Villages and as it's grown. I can get you the exact number, but off the top of my head, I want to say that there are 12, 12 or 13 fire stations that were intended and planned for city proper before West Villages came in.
An exation. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Karason?
Okay. First, where is it in this document that guarantees that 74 additional acres?
The definition of combined-use lands on the beginning that will help you identify what they are.
Page two of the agreement. Very bottom of it.
Oh, I see.
And then again on page 15, in Article 8 about the conveyance of land. Article or section 8.1A addresses the conveyance of that combined-use land, which is the 74.0 acres. Within 90 days of the effective date, the developer has to begin applying for the subdivision and plat. Once all that goes through the process, within 90 days, they have to convey to the city.
Okay. So it's, it's guaranteed. It's not, well, I mean, considering this gets approved, the 74 is guaranteed to be transitioned to city land. There's no may about it.
That is correct.
So there's that. Next is talking about the fire stations two and three. And they're talking about the, the trigger point of being X amount of, X amount of permits. And my concern with that is that it's really not about the permits as much as it is the level of service. Because at this point, yes, density is set at X. But as we've seen down the road, density can change, you can go up by levels, you can... So the level of service may be adjusted and that's... I'm worried about us having this fixed amount of the 13,000th permit when essentially, if you have an apartment building, how many permits is that, one? So you see where I'm going with this? So how do we address that if the level of service hits a certain trigger versus specifically these residential buildings, that it's addressed with a new study? Because that's my bigger concern.
Part of that, Scott Titus again for the Fire Rescue District, and that's a great question. Part of that is through discussion. We need, we needed to come up with something for a trigger point. If you remember and go back to the original principles of agreement, there was a lot of great ideas, but they didn't, there wasn't really any trigger points or discussion to them. One of the things that I can say, and didn't really have the opportunity to say when I first came up, is I've been very, very happy. I know that a lot of the people that are here now may not be here when things come up in the future and things like that. And we spent actually quite a bit of time of talking about that. How do we, how do we make sure that this intent carries on through, through people, not just time? And we talked to ESCI who did the independent study and we went through a lot of things on how do we best put that down? And, and that was what we came up with as the best idea. I can tell you, and I know the people will change and things are going to change. That's a, it's, it's a trigger point for discussion to look at and to start that problem. The third station is, is when a study would be triggered. The second station, we're pretty clear on. As a matter of fact, I can tell you, when you talk about the 5,000, we're already past that now, right? So that's why Fire Station One is, is in process and being built. The second trigger point, I think, was at 8,000 so that it would be done before 10,000. Well, we're already partway towards that, right? So again, a big question right now what the economy is doing, but I would imagine in the next couple of years, if it continued as it is right now, within two years, we would be talking about being right close to that trigger point. I don't think that there's that much variance in what those rooftop considerations would be in that timeline to be that impactful. I would agree with you, at the third station, it could be, but we're going to do the study that would address that. I, I felt...
I guess what I'm trying to get at is if they were to do, to say, let's just say a town center, we're going to change some of our ULDC codes and, and it may allow them to go up to that third story, fourth story. And remember when we had the high school, we allowed it, but we really didn't plan for the fact we needed a ladder truck that actually reached that fourth story or the third story of City Hall. So what I'm trying to get at is that how do we have a trigger that if we go beyond what's, what's here and now, that it's addressed somehow?
And I'm going to speak a little probably outside of my zone here, but from the fire department's understanding of it is if something were to drastically change, is that we're to go through a process with the city and through planning and things like that. We have the opportunity through the SDR process to put those comments in, to have those conversations and to say, hey, this really kind of changes at what we were originally looking at and it can be impactful. And so we would address it at that time and...
So it would be through the SDR process is what you're saying?
I think so. Would I not be correct?
But then wouldn't they have some sort of an argument that, but our agreement says we're only, we only have to do this, you know?
That agreement is based on the predication of kind of what we have now in the plans and I, and I...
And again, you would be able to put conditions. I mean, if there is a major change, like we've had, I mean, just using, yes, last night as the example. You know, you had a church coming in and wanting to build something bigger than what, you know, with, with exceptions and all these changes. And you can make conditions or you can say no. Well, if they were to take an area of the West Villages that is currently designed to be a certain use, which is what this whole agreement is based on, is predicted uses that are going to happen out there. And there's a major change, you know, like using your example, a multi-hundred apartment complex that if it was just single-family homes, might be 10 homes. Yes, that would be a significantly different trigger. But when they came to redo that land, rezone it or whatever process, depending on what they want to do, they had to go through, you would be able to say, okay, but we're, we're going to put some conditions in there.
So I'm looking for the language that specifically addresses it that way.
So in terms of, of that process, you'd be looking at a VDPP amendment essentially. The VDPP currently for Village E, as an example, the town center is your most dense part of it. It already allows for buildings up to 120 feet in height. And it gives that height based on a floor-area ratio. So it's taking into account how much of the land they're covering. So those standards are already there. If they wanted to amend that and come back and go higher, they'd have to come through the ordinance process to go back to the commission. And at that point, you'd go, well, how is this going to impact our provision of services? When we do those, we send them out to staff review, so that would be the opportunity for the fire department to weigh in as well.
Okay, so we're covered is what you're saying. So with that said, now we go further. What about the other services, the police department, the public works, solid waste specifically? You know, what if there comes a time where you do have to have that two substations out there versus just the one that's planned? How do we make sure that those particular levels of service is addressed? Because we don't have any triggers for those others, only the fire study.
Chief's coming, but if, on the police side of it, the original GPA... Chief's coming. But on the police side of it, the original GPA contemplated a fifteen-hundred square foot facility. There, what we've agreed to and what we've been working with with the design is basically a ten-thousand-plus square foot facility. It's part of the building with fire, but also an additional fifteen-hundred square foot garage, as well as an area, should they ever need to expand, they can expand. And that's what we've been working with the architect. While the agreement calls for, I believe it's five and a half acre site, the site plan right now is working with a piece that's larger than that, and trying to fit everything together to provide maximum flexibility from our side to both chiefs.
Todd Garrison, Police Chief. As he stated, the current plan that's in the process will give the ability to expand that police substation up in the West Villages in the future if we need it. We're not like the fire department where we respond from our locations, so we very well can service that entire area from one single location.
All right, so you don't, you feel that you're covered in that?
Oh, absolutely, hundred percent.
That's what I needed to know. And solid waste, I know that there was something in there about solid waste.
Yeah, we, solid wastes evaluate this, they, the developers met their obligation under the principles of agreement, and solid waste is able to ramp up because they don't need necessarily a physical, physical, theirs is very vehicle-based, and they can ramp up, you know, as impact fees are collected. So they are designed to ramp up as this community out here builds up.
That's, I thought that there was something in here where they weren't going to have any property or something.
They don't need, they don't need any property.
That's what it is with respect to the conveyance of land, bless you. And I get that they don't need it now, but what about in the future if the level of service, I go back to level of service, that they need, say, a truck parking area or something?
Well, the good news is, you've got a large canvas of land on River Road, that fifteen acres of that, under the principal agreement, was for general government purposes, and you can make it for that. Now, I would not recommend it turning into a transfer station, but you could obviously turn it into, you know, a vehicle depot or vehicle storage facility or stuff like that, but, you know. I don't think that area out there is conducive for like outdoor solid waste, but.
No, no, you'd have some people flipping out, that's for sure.
That's why I started snickering, I could just imagine City Hall being filled regardless if there was coronavirus.
The next is the Blue Heron Park. If I remember correctly, Blue Heron Park was supposed to have open access to the public. I would like to see some language in there similar to what's being mentioned in the trails, that the public access will open to the public and grant easement, because it's not mentioned in here.
Because it's been up and operating, and it is open to the.
It's open to the public.
I know, but unless it's in here, I'm kind of concerned that we're all gone and they decide to close it because they don't, they're not required to have it open to the public. I'm pretty sure it's part of the D.
Yeah, section five point two G does say that the parties agree that the district retains an ongoing obligation to operate and maintain Blue Heron Park for the benefit of the public. That language is slightly different than what's in the trail section, but it does speak to public benefit.
The benefit of the public is where again? I'm sorry, I missed it. Five point two G.
Five point two subsection G.
That would be why, wrong fan page.
Yes, on page twelve.
Okay, so you, you're confident the word benefit of the public is fine?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. And then the only other thing is that any necessary changes to this agreement to mirror and reflect what we changed in the pattern book, is there anything that we're going to need to do so that one complements the other?
And staff can correct me, but I don't think there's any changes you made to the pattern book that are gonna have an impact on this agreement.
No.
Okay, okay.
No, we'll be coming back with the index map amendment, which will reflect some of the changes on here, but they're not required for the.
And then my final question, I know you all are happy to not hear my mouth anymore, is the whole impact fee structure, and, and I don't know how you accomplish this, but there should be a proportionate fair share to the general overall city infrastructure of those impact fees? That, you know, not all of those impact fees and their credits should be accounted for directly to reimbursement, that a certain percentage of them need to go back to the city proper for its impact to the overall infrastructure, whatever one that is. Does that, do you understand?
That's certainly something that, first of all, in the original agreement is where they started getting the reimbursements and everything collected up there. And we, that was our starting point when creating this agreement. That being said, if, there's also a nexus issue of how close they are. I understand there's also their portion of the city, but right now, like I said earlier, we're not gonna collect enough impact fees for them to get reimbursed for everything. The commission has one hundred percent control of that.
I understand that, but what, and I get the reimbursement is going to be, we are gonna wind up paying for some of the infrastructure needs later on down the road. I get that. What I'm trying to get at is that there's a certain percentage of the fire department and administrative staff, and there may be a need for expansion in the general main office for, to support the impacts of West Villages. Same with, say, the police department needs an expansion, and solid waste in those main areas that will have to expand in order to support the impacts that West Villages are having on the city as a whole. So when we talk about giving all of those impact fees back or reimbursement, shouldn't it be a proportionate fair share versus the entire amount? And again, I say I don't know how we accomplish that, because in real.
What the agreement does say is that once you've met your obligation to the developer, everything above and beyond that is, can be used by the city, by all means, if the attorney needs to correct me, but it says anything above and beyond is free to be used by the city as it sees fit.
But you're still, I think what I'm trying to get at is the payback should be reduced because of the fact that there's a proportionate fair share that should not be stuck within that area. Does that, is that what I'm trying to get at?
But you would expect that.
Huh?
I said generally disagree, but you would expect that. Overall, you know, like the wastewater plant, we may theoretically get that original reimbursement, but we also know there's gonna be a need for future expansion. I'll tell you right now, there's not enough permit fees gonna ever come back to pay for a future expansion. Fire stations, at the current impact fee level, there's enough to get paid for the first one, maybe half of the second one. That first fire station, as the chief can explain, is being designed to be cohabitated with the county. Now, I never asked for, but I assume the cohabitation agreement in some way, shape, or form will provide some way of revenue for the city from the county for them to occupy that building or other ways to mitigate costs in the city. I mean, we're providing you a lot of abilities for a lot of things, but quite frankly, we'll never get, we'll never get paid for the water plant back either. Fire station, we won't. Police station, we think right now we will, but that's gonna get close as we've greatly increased the size of those facilities.
No, and I understand that. I just think there should be some sort of a reference point that not all those monies are collected specifically for that area, that there are impacts that go beyond that radius. And I don't know, city attorney, did you have anything? I see assistant city attorney, kind of.
I think Attorney Roberts might be able to assist the conversation to a degree.
Margaret Roberts, Assistant City Attorney. The impact fees are collected from the annexed property. The impact fees that are paid from development within the other portions of the city will still be allocated to your needs to meet those impacts. So that's the first restriction that's been incorporated in this agreement to limit the amount of fees that are paid back or used for the reimbursements. The other factor is the total cost of the improvements. As you've heard said, a great percentage, but a proportionate share is what we're agreeing upon, will probably not be paid back. So you have those two factors working together that limit how much the city is reimbursing from impact fees in the annexed property.
I don't even know how to explain it.
I think I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. You're asking that a percentage of those impact fees be held back to go to, to the larger system in general, because.
Because there's impact.
An impact on the larger system in general.
Similar to what we did with the transportation impact fees. We said X amount can be used for the improvements on River Road. The other, the twenty percent stays within the coffers for the impacts that are on the general traffic improvements needed within the city, because there is an impact on all aspects, not just within that radius. So I don't necessarily agree with these.
I mean, I, I use the utilities. I have water. And I pay X amount capacity fee for my capacity to be able to use, plus the usage, how much water I use. And I think that's what you're thinking of, is like that capacity fee goes to the administrative and the system itself is probably what you're thinking of. So the impact fee, I think you were wanting to see a portion of it be given to the whole.
The system for the impact, correct.
What I think I'm hearing is, let's say they collect a million dollars in the West Villages for whatever. Of that million dollars that's in the West Villages impact fee account, you wanna be able to take maybe five percent or ten percent out of that and put it into the general impact fee accounts. Is that?
Exact, yeah. I mean, that's kind, and it's not really the overall, because we have impact fees and these reimbursements per individual projects. So when it says that we collected X amount of dollars and we're going to pay that same exact X amount of dollars back to, for, say, the fire department's build out, it shouldn't be that whole amount, because the impact goes beyond just the building. It goes into all the other impacts that go outside that particular building being built. Does that?
But the flip of that is with the fire?
If I may, Scott Titus for Fire Rescue District, from an operational standpoint, I would be remiss if I gave any legal opinion. So apart from that, but when you speak to or ask the question of, we have a very fluid organization. I think police is similar. There is, there is a direct benefit to adding to services in that area because it provides us another resource. As you know, when, when we get a brush fire on that end of town and we send resources there, we kind of backfill that with other fire stations. So arguably, arguably, there is that benefit. We're achieving that. In the design of this fire station and police complex, there are a number of things where we thought about, what is the impact and future growth, not just for, directly for those people, but for our departments as how they operate. And so we thought about things, like we put an office up there for an inspector because we can keep an inspector up there full-time. We're overcrowded here, you know what we're doing. So that alleviated, that gave him the ability to go and work out of there. He'll still be connected. It gave him an area where he could do plans review. We also set up a conference room. There's a combined classroom area there that can be divided into half for police and fire, or can be joined together for both agencies, or if the city needed to come and have a meeting up there. So there are, I think, some tangible benefits to kind of what you're saying operationally. Now, how that has anything to do with impact fees, I don't want to speak to you, because that's not my hearing.
Well, there are a couple of considerations, I think, to the concept, and you may very well know this, Commissioner, but I think it's worth it to put it on the record for those who may be listening. That is that impact fees must be used for capital improvements. They cannot be used for personnel. And also that under our code, impact fees must be used within a certain timeframe where they have to be refunded.
Which is new. I didn't know about that. I knew about that on the county side, but I didn't know that that had become part of our code local. I didn't know that.
State statute?
I know the county had it where, whatever they collected from the city, they had, I think, ten or fifteen years. That's how we wound up getting the money back for the intersection on River Road, but I.
I believe it is state statute.
But what I'm trying to get at is that we know that, let's just say for the example, the police department is busting at the seams, and so this is going to be an additional impact. And while the substation may handle the here and now impacts, it may not handle the future. And that's what I'm trying to get at. It's not.
Yeah, but.
This isn't our, this isn't our code commissioners. It's in section fifty-eight dash one zero eight of the city code.
But to put things.
Which has not been amended since I've been here.
I'm sorry, what, fifty-eight what?
And this provision has not been amended since I've been here. Five eight dash one zero eight.
Okay.
Thank you.
From the fire and the police, because that's obviously what we're working on this initial building. The original GPA contemplated the fire station would be similar to the newest fire station, which is Station Eighty-Five. That's roughly eighty-five hundred square feet. The police station was gonna be fifteen hundred square feet. It's a ten-thousand-square-foot facility. Through this process, we're looking at roughly, not including the garage, a twenty-two thousand square foot facility. We're looking at roughly five to six million dollars invested in facilities for future growth there that provide city ability, and quite frankly, we're gonna hit those, we're gonna press those numbers. And when we get to the second fire station, partly because we've oversized the first one, it is gonna severely limit how much impact fees can be available to reimburse us.
But, but again, listen.
We will never be reimbursed even for two fire stations.
Let us be very clear, you're not paying for anything. You're getting the money back. So, so whatever you don't get back, the city will be responsible to carry over. So when it comes to impacts, the impact fees are only gonna go so far.
And they're only, and we gotta develop, basically, we're funding it for twenty to thirty years before we get repaid.
Right, but.
You know, banks get paid for their money.
You're funding it as far as putting the money out to get it built, get it, but you're getting the money back.
Someday. And there's no guarantee we're gonna get it all back, and we're not gonna get it all back based on just a nominal carry of money. We're financing it for zero.
But you're getting the service. So, I mean, it's, it doesn't matter. It's nor here nor there. The point, what my point is, is that there are exponential impacts to the overall general government. Regardless of which way you look at it, there will be a need for expansion in the general overall government, you know, area because of these impacts, and that there should be some sort of accountability. And God bless staff right now, right here, for making those provisions and those, and, and, you know, their plans. These guys did a great job, but I'm looking at ten, twenty years. Because when we started this out, the densities, the additional residents, the lessened commercial, the brave state, none of that was part of the original plan. So I have to look at it that these things may change down the road. And in ten years, that level of service as what we're looking at now may not be just three stations. It may be way more than three stations, and it may be way more than one ladder truck. I have to look at it that way, because if I didn't look at it that way, that's just not. that's just not, it's not even ethical on my side. So my point is, is that we need to cover ourselves and make sure that we are looking at this in a reasonable manner that says we are taking the impacts of this particular project and making sure it's accounted for city, for the city overall and the impacts to it, not just within that radius. And that's why I don't know how to address that. Does it need to be in a new impact fee study? Does it need to be as part of this agreement? Maybe it's just already referred to. I don't know. But it needs to be accounted for somehow. That's the bottom line.
I am sure you've heard Assistant City Manager Yarborough say this before, at least from fire and police. And again, that's what we're doing, we've been doing the most work on in the last six months. I believe those impact fees could and should grow for those facilities. Obviously, water, wastewater, we've handled separately. And I believe the same, quite frankly, for those. I was surprised, I think it was last August, when your ERC numbers for water and sewer both went down. They went down nominally, but that's kind of counterintuitive. So from our standpoint, at least those four fees growing probably makes some sense. I think solid waste, you've got one we paid for trucks in the past. There's a significant amount of money there for future investments in vehicles. And that may be the approach to look at some of these impacts. Are they consistent with other communities as well as what your projected expenses are in the future?
John, John, if I could, until y'all charge 100%, until y'all apply 100% of the impact fee, I don't know if it's going to be reasonable to ask for additional monies to be carved off and go into, to other general overall city locales. Because right now you're operating at 75%. And for the longest time, you were operating at less than 50%. So until you do 100%, I, I don't know how that's going to work.
And have a study done.
And have a study done.
We are in the midst of a study though, right?
We're, we're in the initial part of it.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner Carrison? Because I don't, I, I, I see a set of style made with this subject. So.
No, no, I'm done.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Seeing none, I do have a few. When I look at Exhibit A and Exhibit B, it is complete mumbo jumbo, survey, speak. But then when I go to Exhibit C, I have a little map. And Exhibit D, I have a little map. And Exhibit E, I have a little map.
I have little maps.
I love maps. And I'm wondering.
Do you like to know why that, why that is?
Well, I, I understand because you, you have a specific survey with legal boundaries, meets and bounds. I get that. Could we put a map on there with the exact same verbiage that you have on Exhibit C, D, and E that says, "This map is conceptual use only and shall not be relied upon in place of a survey"? It would really make things easy. No?
Well, we, we definitely want the meets and bounds.
I, I'm not saying to get rid of meets and bounds. I'm saying have a map in addition to, with that caveat that it is not to be relied upon in place of a survey. Because Exhibit A is annexed property. Okay. I look at a survey and I go, I don't know what, what's annexed property? What does that look like to the common eye? When I go to Exhibit B, it says district boundaries. Yes, there's a survey, but what does that look like to the common eye? Put a map in there with the caveat that you have for Exhibit C, D, and E.
The index map does show both of those things.
But that's not what Exhibit A and B is. Exhibit A is not an index map. It is saying annexed property and then it goes into the survey.
Right.
Meets and bounds.
Right. I think what I, what I'm saying is if you were going to put a map and you could put the index map in, because it does show both the annexed property and the West Villages district on it.
That's fine. Just something that shows what that survey is conveying that people can't visualize, that people can't see.
Do you want it as an additional, on top of what was already there? You want to add it as an additional exhibit? Is that what you, is that what you mean? Or in place of an exhibit?
I, I, personally, I think it'd just be easy to put the, a simple Simon little map showing what the
So adding an additional exhibit.
boundaries look like.
Talk about adding a map to those two exhibits.
Yeah.
That, we can do that, but it means it's going to go back. You'll have to go back to the district for approval and then they'll come.
Okay. I, I, I really don't think y'all are going to have a problem with approving a, a, a visual map.
I don't have much more time with this. With the burn rate.
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt? Commissioner Zensky, we have prohibited the public from being in this building. And it's violating the law when you do not speak on the microphone to allow the public to participate.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Yeah, we've been working on that police and fire station for six months. And we're burning through a lot of money. And quite frankly, I should have stopped a while ago. So if it's adding a map to match these legal descriptions, I don't want to start the process over. You know, because we got a meeting tomorrow that's going to have 10 or 12 professionals in a room talking about police and fire station. And, you know, we're supposed to be out next week with CM RFQs.
Well, I, the only reason why I'm looking at adding a map, and I know it sounds very trivial to you and I, I understand that, but this document is going to precede all of us. And, and if in 20 years, we don't know what that survey looks like to somebody else coming in and reading this fresh, at least they have a visual idea of what that survey looks like in a map configuration.
Adding it. I just don't want to have to come back just because we're going to add two pictures that convey what this legal description says. That's all I'm saying.
I will move on to the other things and let you all think about that. 3.2, we're talking about Station 85. And I think I'm going to need Chief here for this part and possibly Chief Garrison also. It's talking about using Station 85, which currently is the state of the art kind of building here in the city of Northport. And that's by today's standards, that it's state of the art. But with the rapid change in technology, the, the rapid change of best management practices and the potential changes of best management practices just based on coronavirus and any other thing that can come down the pipe. I, I, I'm very afraid that we are essentially taking future fire stations and holding them back to what our current state of the art Fire Station 85 has. But it would be holding back possibly Station 80, Station 2 and Station 3. Station 3 has a little bit of protections in it. And I'm wondering if we could add those kind of protections into Station 8, Station 2 because that is still way at the planning stages compared to Station 1. I understand using Station 85 as the benchmark for Station 1, but I can't see keeping that benchmark the same for Station 2. And, and I hope I'm, I'm being clear in my concern. Go ahead.
You are. Scott Titus for the Fire Rescue District. So there's a lot that went into this and we had tremendous dialogue on what's the best way to write this? How are things? So what we agreed to was the design kind of finishes and standards of Station 82. And for those things, we're referencing and talking about polished concrete floor. We're talking about solid surface countertop, some of, some of those other things. I'll give it, I'll give an example. So as we're designing the, the fire station for West Villages right now, and we're actually not all meeting in a room tomorrow. I think we're doing a virtual meeting. Just, just in case anybody picked up on that. We're designing things in that station that we don't have in our other ones, but that we are implementing in our other ones. And I'll give an example. You all saw, come in front of you this past year approved in this budget. We're doing some things with video messaging. So, yeah, displays in the stations so that we can see, you know, where units are, what the calls are. We can put up message boards and things like that. We don't have those in any of the stations right now. We don't have it at Station 85. But we have that in the budget. We're working towards it. So I'm sure John could have said, well, you don't have it at Station 85 now. We're not doing it. He understands. So we had to have some kind of a reference in there. And, and so we tried to come up with language that protected both interests equally somewhat, if you, if you'd understand that. And I think I've been very happy with the collaborative effort. I understand your, your question is, is valid. I think we feel pretty comfortable where we've addressed it. I talked actually with the Assistant City Manager yesterday and I gave the example of the new standard for all extrication equipment right now pretty much is instead of the old lines where you had to pull it off of the truck and bring the jaws of life over and you could only go a certain distance from the truck to cut things. Well, those, those are battery powered tools now. We've changed that through, through our, our whole department. Well, now the next stage coming out this year is for saws and everything else, like for a roof or certain types of things, those are battery powered too. All of our stuff that we have now is gas powered. When we order the new stuff for the new station, it'll be the battery powered. They understand that. We've had that in discussions and I think it covers. I think it's loose enough to have those discussions. What they don't want is us to come back and go, hey, they have, you know, rocket suits now. And it's not something you were ever intended to do anything else, but since we're paying for it, we want to have rocket suits for firefighting. And so we felt comfortable with where it was. We had a lot of talk with the legal team, with West Villages' legal team, Assistant City Manager and myself. And again, as you go through and try and do these things with a lot of different interests and entities trying to find that middle ground, that's what we came up with and said, we feel like we can live with that. I know for a number, at least for the first two fire stations, unless City Manager who's not here right now decides, I won't be around for the second one, I think we're covered with that one. The third one, I think the study covers us. So we were very comfortable that our needs will be met. And I think that everybody's kind of stood pretty tall on coming together to get the agreement done.
And, and I agree. The fire station number one, that's pretty much done. And yes, use Station 85 as the benchmark, as the template, as the, the state of the art with a few little changes because it's being implemented citywide or going to be implemented citywide. My concern is at Station 2. You, you don't know, and maybe you can answer it this way. Is there a fire station design module that is the best you can do today? Use these things today if you're designing a fire station. Use this FFNE.
So we do, and actually we have it referenced. Some of those things are referenced in the ESEI study when we talked about response plans and things like that. But you'll hear a lot of times when we talk about things, we refer to the NFPA standards.
That's it, NFPA.
We don't meet every NFPA standard. There's not a fire department in the country that meets all of them because it's just, it's just not possible. They're considered best practices, but some of them are, you could do all those things, but you would have to be incredibly funded. So as we go through time and as we do things, we choose, you know, we look at them and say, what is our exposure? What is our risk level? And what things are important for us to meet? With fire stations, I can tell you the NFPA standard is when they come out and say your fire station needs to have these things, we say, when we go to design and build, and we did, this, we're having these discussions right now. When you build a fire station, it will be up to the current NFPA standard. So that talks about human feet permitting of air that need to move, you know, move out to keep our firefighters safe. There's compartmentalization of the bunker gear so there's no transference of, of contaminated stuff into the bunk area where they're sleeping and things like that. So those things are all absolutely, when you say state of the art, we look at 85. But if those things change, those protection things change, not just for the station, but for a fire apparatus and/or for the equipment, those things are covered and we're very comfortable that they're covered in the agreement that, that we did. And, and they would do those things. They, they need to be, to meet the current standard.
So your crystal ball of what future best management practices are and the future technologies is covered based on this NFPA? I think I got that right? And you're comfortable with those latest standards being done for Station 2 and Station 3? Station 3 has language in there that says it will be.
Yeah, and, and I'll give you, and it's not just NFPA. There's other things too. So ambulances fall under different specification. And if they say an ambulance needs to have, well, with, with the pandemic going on right now, we fortunately, a number of years ago, we saw some of the potential of the exposure of some of these things. I think you all have heard us talk about the aeroclave that we have. We can plug into those and they clean the back of our ambulances. Well, that wasn't a requirement. I could envision that being a requirement in the future in light of what's going on right now. If that became a requirement for ambulances, when they bought us an ambulance, that, that would be in there. And there's not, they're not going to say, oh, no, we're not. You know, one of the things we've had a lot of dialogue with is, yes, they know they're on the hook. They don't want to give us substandard equipment. They don't want it to be, you know, we're providing service for their community. They want us to be as safe up there as we are throughout the rest of the city and be somewhat consistent. They just wanted to safeguard us from asking for things that were above and beyond what would be considered to be normal level of service for, for the entire city as a whole.
So based on my concerns that I tried to articulate, you, you're comfortable with the way the language is in here to alleviate the concerns that I potentially see in the future? You're okay with the way it is here?
And, and, and part of that comfort comes with, through a lot of dialogue with City Attorney's Office, through a lot of dialogue with every, the whole team involved. And so like.
Because we're basically, we're, we're stock, and I don't like using it that way, with the contract conditions outlined here, not knowing what tomorrow brings, next year brings, or in five years, what that brings. And I, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with it. And Chief, you're okay too? I know that yours is already pretty much a done deal too, but I just wanted to get your feedback also.
I think if all parties were to say, could they write it differently for themselves to be perfectly happy? Everybody would say yes, because that's part of the negotiating. I think we arrived at an area where we all said, you know, I think that meets, meets the best for all of us and we're comfortable.
Because I know your job is to, you know, fire an EMS and yours is law enforcement. And I just want to make sure that these are covered given the state of the world, not only today, but what we don't know is going to happen in the future.
There was a lot of global discussion too. It was really neat to see the team come together and talk about a lot of things. You know, Chief Garrison wasn't thinking just about police and I wasn't thinking just about fire. And so there was a, it was actually great, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that assurances and I do appreciate the conversation. Sure.
I see Station 85 at this point in time being the, the model to go after. And I don't mean just, I, I'm talking about the future also. Because when you see what that provides to the community, that example would be for the future also. Not that you would be building something behind time, but you'll be building what is, just like Station 85, presenting the best to the community. So as the example, that is what's going to go forward just like it's the example of the best that we have right now.
And I can tell you that when we talked to the design team, we did things. That was one of the things that, that John and West Villages said is this is, this is the, you know, this is the interest to our community as well. We want it to be nice. And so there are things that we've recommended in that station that we don't have in Station 85. Every station that we've built, I'm proud to say, every station's been a little bit better because there's always lessons learned. There's always things that we can do a little bit better. You know, when you get into some of these stations that have that kind of horseshoe design, sometimes it's dark and it's kind of quiet. So we talked about how do we do different lighting options on the police side? They looked about, they looked at putting some glass at some of the offices so that it doesn't give that enclosed feeling. And so there's no requirement that that has to be done. The requirement is that there's four walls, a roof, and that you can operate out of it. But I think that they've been very responsive to some of those design suggestions to make those things better, to make it be a presentation station and stuff. I think you all will be really excited when, when you see the product.
And, and I know that Station 85 is state of the art. I said that at the very beginning. But it's the state of the art by today's standards. And then when Station 1, whatever number that's going to be called, I don't know, is finished, that is going to be the state of the art based on those standards. So.
See, I see it differently. You're having it be a point in time. And I'm saying that it is a measurement. It is an example. It's not the benchmark to copy, but it is the example to go forward to the future. So as Station 85 is for the future now, so will those future ones go to the future. You don't just duplicate what you got.
That's why I'm saying Station 2, is it going to, based on this language, is going to be duplicating 85, not 1.
Because they're not duplicating it. They're using it as an example for the future.
I get that. So my, my concerns are alleviated. I appreciate the conversation. Commissioner Carrison, your light is on.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I forgot to ask about the joiner. Was there some sort of a presentation about why it has nothing to do with you, Scott, or police? Yeah, is there a reason why we have these, the agreements of the joiner and consents? Just want to kind of clarify.
Yes, there is a reason. Margaret Roberts, Assistant City Attorney. That joiner is signed by what's called the West Villages Entities. Those are several entities. You'll see them named there that have some portion of ownership interest in the lands that will be transferred to the city. So I want to be sure through that jointer and consent that they agree to that transfer. So that's again, another recorded document, just to be sure they're not a party to your agreement.
But this covers us.
But they're agreeing to this agreement.
And we have a third document, the memorandum of agreement. Would you like to speak to that, Margaret?
The memorandum of agreement provides a summary that is recorded in the record with the essential reference of how I find that agreement, if that's all I see in the record. It allows title companies to be able to have two access points. One, they have the agreement. And two, they have the memorandum of agreement. So it's just duplicating notice to the world that we have an agreement on the books that affects that real property.
Excellent.
Thank you. Well, I'm not finished with my questions, ma'am. Item number three point six D, it's talking about the biannual notices. It's saying that the city will be providing these biannual notices and letting, based on building permits issued. And it seems like it's going to end at the eight thousandth residential building permit because it's under that same timing section. And I'm wondering, are we carrying that forward, that practice, forward to the next benchmark of the thirteen thousand?
Yes. That'll be the trigger for the, for the fire study. So I'll continue that.
Okay, so it's going to continue all the way through. Thank you very much. So it brings me to the next question is, why are we using permits?
Because it's easier for us to track versus certificates of occupancy. Because we're getting data from ourselves, but also from the county. That may change, but for right now, with our existing softwares, building permit activity is easier to track than certificate of occupancy numbers.
But right now, the city is tracking COs, correct?
Right now, the city tracks the number of units built out there based on a year built field that's in the property appraiser data that we get. I think there are CO reports that go out as well, but I don't think those are segregated by the West Villages. When we looked into the data that's in our system, the building permit is the easiest way for us to go into G I S and pull that data. We're still working on cleaning that up a little bit so that we can have a process very streamlined for that. And our G I S analyst is putting that together and should have it prepared and ready to go within the next few weeks.
And the data, because some of these things will also be factored into by county for the West Villages outside of the city? The data we can get from them is permits is much easier for us to get.
So since the first one, based on us approving this today, the first one would be due in July thirty-first. And if we have to do it by permits, is everything going to be up and running to be able to give them that number based on permits and include the permits that have already been issued from day one until July thirty-first?
Yes, we'll be ready for it.
Thank you. Going to section four point two. It said, letter F on page ten, it says timing and West Vill, it says W V I D. W V I D is not defined anywhere in the document. And I assume you're meaning the district.
Yes. It is, our disagreement for all improved, physical improvements, as such as buildings and equipment, is with the district. And the portion of the agreement has to do with land is with, between the city and the developer.
It is. And throughout the, and that's a good little proofreading catch. Throughout the remainder of the agreement, we refer to W V I D as the district. That's the only time that term appears there. I see that as a Scrivener's error. If Mr. Lozinski agrees with that, that's something that we could change without necessitating re-signature of the document.
Yeah, we have no problem with that. It's a defined term. It's the district. And if we want to just change W V I D to the district, that'd be fine. It's understood.
And I understood it too, but then I went, wait a minute, wait a minute. I don't see that anywhere else. City Attorney, would it be clean if we got a consensus from the board to, to get that changed or you don't need it?
It's not necessary. It's a Scrivener's error.
And I too have a problem with the covenants being removed. I'm going to put it out there on the record because it is opening us up to all sorts of things. Can somebody help me understand the why? Why were those covenants even put on to begin with back in two thousand and nine?
Apologize, ma'am. I was in quick conversation. What was the question?
The covenants that were put on the sixty-three acre park?
Yes, ma'am.
Back in two thousand and nine, why were they put on there? Does anybody have any historical?
I think the intent was to definitely turn it into park. In fact, a master plan was done for that sixty-three acre. It's a, it's a platinum, it's not Cadillac. It's a platinum Cadillac that will never get built. But that's why it was done. But as you say, the world has changed. We've now co-located the properties adjacent to this property. And in staff's infinite wisdom, we thought it made more sense to take off the restrictions so that it would give maximum utility. You know, obviously it's within your purview. The only thing you may want to think about is, if you ever do a larger regional park, you may want to address it then than now, but that's, that's definitely within your purview.
A larger park, I'm sorry.
Like I said before, one of the ideas is let's do a larger, let's do a hundred acre park. The county said, has entertained the idea of building and maintaining a regional park system, but they won't, they don't accept anything that is below a hundred acres as a regional park. So we've had some initial conversations with them about possibly building a regional park, but they need a hundred acres or larger. So obviously, the idea is if you take these restrictions off and clump it together with other lands, that you might be able to create a larger park system.
Commissioner Carson?
Yeah, the park was also part of the negotiations with their open space requirement. And so that's why, as an open space requirement, it was considered park. That's why the restrictions were put on there. Now, with the additional seventy-four acres, I am confident that the majority of it will still remain parkland. It's just a matter of having that flexibility to use it for other governmental uses that may not be fit within the district, you know, itself. So I don't have a problem with that. And I know that we'll look closer into it when all that comes back to us, when the two parcels are rejoined. I'm good with it that way.
One final question, since there's the Scrivener's error on that letter F changing the W V I D. It's, it's an easy fix, it sounds like. Can we add those maps at the same time? And for exhibit A and B? Without any delay? I mean.
I don't know if those maps are created based off of those meets and bounds descriptions. I don't know if the developer has a survey map for those properties. That change is not a Scrivener's error. That would require re-signature by the other parties.
Re-signature? These have, these are signed?
Yes, ma'am. The agreements are signed by the developer and the district. They may, I don't know if it's in your backup, but I have the original signatures here.
And they're not. That's, that's why I'm surprised that they were signed.
After the agenda item was posted, we got the signed copies. And rather than amend just for a signature, I meant to tell you at the beginning, we have the signed copies by the other side.
I didn't know that they had already signed that. Thank you.
Sorry, I meant to mention that at the beginning.
I've got my light on.
Vice Mayor, please.
I would actually hate to put just a picture in on those descriptions. Somebody may find that there's, you know, a little variance or that and cause a problem. So I would rather photos not go, or pictures not go along with those legal descriptions personally myself. As far as the sixty-three acre covenant being removed, I was all right after Fire Chief spoke in regards to that. I have an understanding. I'd actually love to see a regional park. I'd like to see a huge pickleball type arena.
Tournament?
Exactly. Allow the people in West Village to be able to be, you know, involved in that. They can compete with Punta Gorda and defeat them. I mean, snowbird baseball would love to be in their own city of Northport. So having more ball fields out there so that they can go to that direction too. So I'm good with removing the covenant, combining to have the larger area. Thank you.
City Manager, can you tell me how many acres is Atwater Park? I know it's an off-the-wall question. I'm just curious.
I don't know if there's anybody here that knows.
It's not that much.
Give us a minute. We'll see what we can find out for you.
I'd say it was thirty something.
Nowhere near sixty-four.
I'm talking about the whole park complex because for the county to have a regional park, there's.
Oh, it's not even close.
Okay, sorry.
There's a regional park at Woodmere, and I do not see the county doing a regional park less than ten miles away.
There's a regional park not even a half mile down from that sixty-four acres. They're not going to do a regional park there.
They're not going to do a regional park there. I don't see it.
We've had conversations. They didn't say no. Their interest was piqued, but we didn't get much further than that.
I can tell you that we've tried in the past. In fact, we, we talked, we had a Parks and Rec Advisory Board that looked at that property extensively. And we proposed many different things, including a dirt bike track, not dirt bike, but a BMX track to hold, I mean.
Atwater's twenty-six acres.
Thank you.
Yeah, see, I knew, I mean, this has been just beaten to death, that sixty-four acres. That's why I'm so, I'm in absolute support of giving flexibility.
All right, are we ready for a motion now?
Yes.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. City Manager, do we have any public comment?
Yes, ma'am. We do have one. And I'm going to read fast so I can get through in three minutes. This is from Mark Rizzo, Lake Geraldine. Please try to maintain the peace and tranquility of the surrounding area as originally mandated. A park would fit that role, but we do understand the need for additional city facilities, such as police and fire departments. Northport and Venice are growing so rapidly, I am struggling with the idea of relocating. More people brings more traffic, accidents, congestion, and especially crime. I still don't, still don't understand what's wrong with just leaving the land as is. Our wildlife needs a home too. Thousands of trees replaced with concrete is turning our beautiful and peaceful area into South Sarasota. More residents and stores does bring in more tax dollars, but at the same time, Northport must spend millions of additional funds on infrastructure, roads, police, fire, utilities, et cetera. So where is the true game? The commission lives in Northport. You drive on our roads and shop in our stores. So I'm positive you see the drastic increase in traffic, accidents, and crime. Anger and rage is also on the rise. Our city is in your hands. Your control, you control our quality of life. In which direction you will take us? At some point soon, we must stop the bulldozers and consider the well-being and peace of our current residents. There's nothing wrong with a small, peaceful, and beautiful hometown. These places are lost on, at a record pace. And once the natural land is developed, it's lost forever. With peace and respect, Mark Rizzo, Lake Geraldine, H O A.
Is there any more? Any other public comments? Vice Mayor, do you have any other public comments?
I have nothing.
Thank you very much.
And I do not either.
All right. No other comments, no other public comment. I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll move to approve the West Village developer agreement post-annexation as presented.
Second.
Motion on the floor to approve the post-annexation agreement as presented by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Emrich. Anything to that, Vice Mayor?
No.
Commissioner Emrich?
No.
Thank you. I, I do want to see if I can get an amendment in the sixty-three acre park in section five point one, because this is one of those things I am very concerned about removing because by removing the covenant, we are also opening it up to future commissions to do with as they see fit at that time. While in the five point one, it says the city desires to provide for a park, fire, and other general government facilities on the property for up to four years.
Forty.
I'm sorry, forty. I saw forty. I said four. Thank you. For forty years. The desires to concerns me. Is it possible to change that to, and I don't think this would be a problem for the West Villages? The city shall provide for a park, fire, and/or general government facilities on the property for up to forty years. Would that be a problem to the West Villages to re-sign with that one change?
As long as it doesn't, we don't have to restart the process.
Just changing one word from desires to to shall.
I don't.
Do you, I'm asking.
And you guys control that.
Thank you. At this time, I'll pass the gavel figuratively to the city, the Vice Mayor.
Just throw it.
There. To create an amendment to section five point zero one, changing the word, the city desires to provide, blah, 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 to have it say the city shall provide for park, fire, blah, 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 for up to forty years.
There's an amendment put on the floor to section five point zero one, changing the word desires to shall. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the amendment fails. And here comes the gavel back.
Don't hit me in the head. Thank you. All right.
Can I explain why no? I said I wouldn't second it. Because I, I feel like you're kind of holding it to that sixty-four acres. And we don't know, it may be on the other seventy-four that they're going to do that fire. It may be a combination of them. It may, I just don't.
Why I didn't either.
Yeah, I just don't know. I don't want to hold.
The sixty-three acres is what they are removing the covenants from.
I know, I know.
And by keeping it that they are planning to do this, I don't care where it is, but it's in this section. And I was trying to keep it as simple assignment as I could for the developer to sign off on this quickly without starting the process over for him. That we are still keeping some type of covenant on sixty-three acres, that it shall be a park in government buildings and stuff like that.
But yet again, as they explained earlier, that's going to come back to us. And that would be the time that we put those possible covenants on it. That's how I understood it, right, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So call the vote?
That's one way to lock it up, if you want to lock it up.
It failed. There's no point in having further discussion. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the vote. Seeing no other comments?
I am not seeing the correct motioner or seconder. All right, so this is actually the main motion to approve the developer agreement? Thank you.
And that passed four to one with McDowell dissenting? The reasons I dissent it is, I don't know what the future holds. I don't know what this possible looking of plaque and putting covenants on. And I firmly believe this property needs to be protected. That's why I voted against it. So going, going back to.
Mayor, can I make a closing statement? I didn't want to say it during the. Yeah, well, specific to this agreement.
You get two agreements. You also have to do motions on them. You need one on the mass, on the mass agreement, then one on the, actually, you don't need it on the jointer, but you do need it on the mass agreement and then.
And then the jointer, right.
Okay, so let's get the.
Can I just, I'm speaking specifically to the development agreement.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank the staff. I want to thank West Villages. I want to thank the Attorney's Office, the City Manager's Office. Listen, this has been years in the making. And to do this in such a short amount of time, you guys are amazing. And that, I just am shocked at how great you did and how, what a fantastic partnership you created and how everybody is happy. Because I can tell you right now, ten years ago, that would not have happened. So thank you. So thank you, every single one of you. I might have been a pain in the ass, and I know it. No, 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 we know it. Deny. But I'm telling you right now, you did a great job, and I thank you all, seriously.
You're welcome.
Ready for another motion?
Seeing no other comments, and yes, y'all did a great job, thank you very much. I would have loved to have agreed to that agreement. I do agree to the agreement in principle.
We understand.
Thank you. So at this time, we also need to do a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement referencing West Village Developer Agreement post-annexation and jointer and consent.
Second. Right?
Motion on the floor to approve the memorandum of agreement of referencing the West Villages Developer Agreement post-annexation and the joint during consent. I have, by, the motion was made by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Karason, anything?
Oh, ma'am.
Take the vote. And that passed five to zero. Seeing no other business, I want to quickly, since we have Parks and Rec and City Manager here, I did have a phone call from a citizen wondering why did we close the kayak ramp? And after, after seeing the article in the newspaper, how Charlotte County closed their ramps and then within twenty-four hours opened them back up because of the public outcry, I was just wondering why are ours closed? Kayaks fit two people.
Two out of seventy-three thousand is not so bad. Pretty good odds. But we've closed multiple parks, but do you want to address? Kayak.
Kayaks. The kayak launch, I think it's.
Oh, it's not me, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's any way to close the kayak launches technically. I mean, if the parks are closed, we close the playgrounds and the restrooms and the courts because we had a lot of use on them. People were, people were gathering in groups much larger than ten. So that was the concern.
In general, we've closed the parks, however, like the boat ramps are, the boat ramp is still accessible. And if it's an amenity within a park, it's, the park itself is closed, so you shouldn't be parking there. You shouldn't be using the rest of the amenities. So therefore, that is one of the amenities within the park.
So all of our playgrounds are closed?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, keep in mind, as we stated yesterday, what, and the document, or the messages we've put out, they're unenforcably closed. In other words, we're not going around, we're not, the police department going out to Highland Ridge Park and, and running people off. We put signs up asking them to follow CDC guidelines. All the parks, all the open-air parks in the county actually are being closed. It's not just ours, pretty much area-wide, they're being closed. Because we, we don't have a way to clean them, and people are not following the six-foot separation and social distancing. So unfortunately.
Kind of hard to push a kid in a swing from six foot away.
It is. Kind of harder for people to maintain less than ten people when they're showing up at twenty and thirty.
And I'm sure they're not six foot away in their houses.
And you cannot regulate human behavior.
I think it also helps to impact somebody, impact something, they can't say, you know, the city wasn't laughing at all.
Yep.
All right, so if the restrooms and stuff aren't being cleaned and maintained, if things aren't being maintained, are we paying our subcontractors during this economic?
Not the ones that aren't working, no.
We are not, okay, because I know that by contract, I'm just wondering, especially with the cleaning crews and stuff for these parks. I just want to make sure.
We have put at your service on notice that these parks are not happening within our contract. It does say that the city may reduce or increase services at any time without an impact, without having to do a whole change order process. We do still have trash pickup happening because trash is still being generated in our parks.
I was sat on a call, but before I tell you this, I just want to say thank you, West Village and staff. Thank you very much for everything. I was on a call with.
Hey, John, sorry about being such a pain about telling you to go around. Have a great day, thank you.
That's my biggest complaint about today, I got to help with that.
Excellent, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I was on a call with Suncoast Partnership and some others, you know, with, with dealing with the homeless. And they were talking about leaving all the bathrooms in the parks within the county open so that they can be utilized by the homeless. So just throwing that out for your info.
All right, seeing nothing else, does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Isn't it horrible how we have to dictate everybody in this world to do something because other people resist in obeying what they should be obeying? And, I mean, it's, it's like the ten or the twenty percent of the classroom is the misbehaviors and the whole classroom suffers for them.
Commissioner Hanks?
Yeah, just a quick question on impact fee refunds. Obviously, you know, we were looking towards, two days ago, and that's not happened. It's a very good time to be able to get folks their refunds.
We are looking to have that to you in, in the month of April still. So that is still going to come to you in the month of April. So that you can approve the second reading, or the.
Third, second, third.
The final reading, hopefully.
Yeah, it's in for April fourteenth.
Right now, I can't issue the refunds because the ordinance hasn't been adopted.
And there's pending, there's legislation that, that may affect how it passed through the legislature that hasn't yet been signed by the governor. So we'll see.
Can you just, in a very simple term, tell me what that is? It's just not in my mind right now.
I'm sorry?
That legislation you're talking about, I just can't.
Regarding a change in, in impact fee? I haven't, I haven't dug into it incredibly deeply yet, I just saw.
The what? Yeah, I just want like an overview.
For its use, if I remember correctly, that they were, they were reducing the limits as to, or increasing the limits as to how you can use the impact.
I couldn't give you an overview as I sat here today, but I looked at FLC's PowerPoint, and I saw that there was a piece of legislation that could affect that, that I want to take a look at between now and the meeting.
But I don't believe it's going to affect what we were doing if I, because I read it, and I don't believe it's going to have an impact on our impact fee legislation.
We'll present you an analysis when we bring the ordinance back.
I just want to do that as, as soon as possible because of, you know, the condition a lot of these places are in. And we, you know, we took more from them than what we should have, and now we're saying you have to hold off during a very tight time.
City Attorney, could you send us what is being proposed and waiting for signature? So that we then, at least, we could be a little bit more upfront? Because I know that it's made many revisions.
I don't currently have it, but I can.
I'm trying to pull it up right now, and I'll forward it to City Manager.
I have to pull it anyway for the file, Commissioner, I'll have to do it.
Commissioner Hanks brings up an excellent point. I mean, this is money that was to be refunded. And we're in a state right now where every little penny helps to people and residents and businesses that paid out with a higher amount.
Something we shouldn't have done.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
Nothing.
All righty, going once, going twice, all right, two fifty-six, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.